You're taping it? Okay, I guess we're ready.
And one more thing, I gotta start the live streaming for YouTube.
Okay.
We start hearing double, I'll, 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 you might hear some echoing for a second, but once, I'll, I'll turn it off.
It says, I have a note that says it's streaming on this.
All right.
It's now streaming live on custom live streaming service. Is that, is that what you're looking for?
Yep, it's working, so it's, it's good, we're good to go.
Yeah, we'll call this meeting to order, Town Plan and Zoning Commission for Thursday, September 22nd, 2022. First item on the agenda would be, actually the second item, approval of the minutes first for August 25th, 2022, of a motion for approval.
So move.
Second.
Second.
Thank you, any additions, corrections, omissions?
Mr. Chairman, I have to abstain on this, I was not at that meeting.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, hearing none, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? Staining?
It's me.
Thank you, Chair votes A, minutes are approved, second set of minutes would be for the special meeting of September 8th, 2022, have a motion for approval?
I don't think I saw my packet.
I didn't either.
All right, I'm sorry. Sorry, I, I, again, I wasn't around last week, so, I'll, I'll, I'll make sure you get it for the next meeting.
All right, let's put that aside, before we get into the rest of our agenda, Mr. Guyner has brought up the fact that for item, 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 which one?
Uh.
Five B, the removal of a cul-de-sac on.
Five A, on my computer.
Oh yeah, the other one is a site plan, I'm sorry, right, it'd be five A, that eventually we'd have to go to a 824 review, so I'd like a motion to add that to the agenda, approval of the relocation of the cul-de-sac for an 824 review. Have a motion to that effect?
Is this the, the 65 Jolly Drive?
Yeah.
Yes.
So move.
Hold a second.
Second.
Thank you, any discussion? Questions?
It's five B on my agenda.
Five B.
Uh, you know what, 'cause I.
Yeah, the removal, relocation, reconstruction is five B.
Okay.
Yeah.
Which is what I said originally, but okay, the site plan approval is five A.
Five A is Malucci Brothers.
I, you know what, I posted in, I apologize, let me.
You're right, it's five B, you're right.
Let, let, let me, okay, hang on a second. I switched things around, you don't, what do you have for public hearings, just one?
Two.
Two.
Okay.
Jacklin Robinson and Richard Rattondo.
About continued public hearings.
Oh yeah, one.
Okay, that's, that, that's why I did confusion, I had to file an amended one with the clerk, and I guess it never went out back to commission, huh? I, I took what was five, the site plan modification for 90 units of single-family residences, moved it up to, yeah, I moved that, I, I moved that up to three B.
Okay.
And, and I'll, I'll put it on the, the screen when it comes up, so, so.
Okay, so that goes up, okay.
Yeah, 'cause I was, you know, I was confused, that, that came in in, in Au- in August, and it was continued, and, and the reason for that, and I was, I was discussing with the chair beforehand, our, our regulations, even though it's a site plan, our regulations for PLR require a public hearing for final site plan approval. Again, it's not, it's not a special permit, we're not revisiting the special permit, we're just approving the final plans that were submitted as required by the regulations.
Okay, so we're actually, it's three A, although that doesn't really enter into the motions, so.
Yeah, let me, let me, let me just quickly email you guys that stuff, and so you have to write agenda on it. On, on the. And the applicant, I think, noted that, after the packets went out, um.
Okay.
And I'll just send it.
Excuse me, please. Could you email me also?
Yep, you'll be on it, you're, I believe you're on the.
Thank you.
You're on the.
Sure. It is actually three A, although, yeah, it really doesn't matter as far as the motion goes, because that doesn't, anyhow, any further discussion?
I apologize for that, again, I'm just trying to. Just do it now. All right, you should have the, the right agenda in your email, and Joyce, you should, I think you were included in that, so.
All right, I'll probably cut myself off if I try to look for the email.
Okay.
I'm going to throw on this.
I'll let you know, there's a, there's a three B, there's a, a second continued hearings.
Yeah, I just stuck it in there, yes. Okay, we still have the motion before us, one more time, any questions, comments? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed?
Bye.
Oops, pardon me, oh, there's another I, okay, extensions, Chair votes A, it's now added to the agenda. All right. Moving on. Item three, public, public hearings continue, versus for Kirk Cameron, Toby Road, have a motion to continue the public hearing.
Open it, to reopen it.
Oh, you hope it reopened, public hearing.
So move.
Move a second.
Second.
Thank you, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed, Chair votes A, we're back on the Toby Road issue. Okay. Where do we stand on this right now, Jose?
Yeah, we have Kirk Cameron here.
I see him, yeah.
Yeah, I, I emailed you guys, uh, some, uh, some of the comments that Steve Kaplan had, I believe he's here also, um, you know, I, you know, I took a, a review of the, of, of the plan, I. And then, again, this is my, my opinion, is that the, the regulate, I, I looked through section, section 6.9, which is the lighting regulations, I don't believe they were intended to be applied to decorative lighting. Um, as a kid, you know, if you look at all the standards, and you look at the type of lighting that is depicted in, in the, in the illustrations, you won't see anything that's decorative lighting, in fact, it specifically exempts seasonal temporary lighting, so you, you don't have to go after everybody that strings up, uh, Christmas lights or, or holiday lights, uh, there's also, uh, and again, I don't know how, you know, I'm reading through the, the, why it was referred to the commission, but it was, you know, it was between planners, or, or, you know, I might have a different opinion as to whether or not it needed to be referred or not, but, uh, in any case, I think the reason it was referred was because section, 6.9 point D, under exemptions and modifications, there's a section that says the commission may by special permit allow lighting that does not comply with the specific standards listed in the section, provided the commission determines that such proposed lighting is consistent with the intent and purpose of these regulations, so you have the discretion, and I guess just to keep it clean, to, to look at the application, hear the applicant, uh, and again, make, make whatever conditions, certainly if, if, uh, you know, one of the conditions could certainly be that, that the, you know, the lighting's obviously only approved for this, the season, the outside dining area, as long as that dining area is existing, I know that state statutes regarding, uh, and I'm not gonna use the word patio, because that, you know, that there's some confusion whether a patio is a structure under building code versus what a patio is under, under the, under zoning regulations, or in general, general, uh, you know, I, I call it all patio seating, but, uh, you know, if you go to West Hartford, they have patio seating on, on, on public street, they have, you know, the, so, uh, but if you, let's just call it outdoor seating for, so we don't get the semantics, I think, uh, so, uh, you know, obviously, one of the conditions would be to, to approve it only for, there was also some confusion, because there's a, another application for site plan amendment for adjacent property, and sort of got uh, mixed up with this one, um, and I think that's separate, and we, and that's not even on the agenda yet, uh, what's happening at the Dog Star and, um, and, and, uh, and, and the one next door, the property next door, which they've encroached on the town right away, so, uh, you know, the, the conditions that I was certainly at is that this, if you do decide to, uh, that this is approvable, then I, and you would, um, you would make it for the length of time, as long as the, as the outside seating area is up, um, uh, and then also make it clear that it's only applies to 16 Toby Road, not, not anything else. Um, what else I was thinking, there was another condition, uh, of, and that, yeah, basically, that you're making no determination with respect to building code or fire code, but, you know, violations, and those are separate, uh, items, I think the, the purpose of the hearing is that, again, is to, to consider and act upon, uh, what we call, for better words, decorative lighting on there, and with that, I'll turn it over to the applicant.
Mr. Cameron, anything to add?
Not really, I mean, I, I think that, um, as Jose stated, it's, it's decorative lighting, it's essentially string lights, I know there was some concern about light trespass from these bulbs. Um, I, I think that I did send a, a photo in, although I don't know that I logged it for the actual meeting, um, but I think you can see that, um, any kind of light trespass to adjoining prop non-existent or incredibly minimal, um, I know that Mr. Kaplan had an issue with it, um, although his, I think he made the claim that his tenants are bothered by it. Um, his tenants are over a thousand feet away, and I don't know if they're bothered by it when they drive by, or what the case is, but we've tried to, uh, you know, we've tried to move the lights up higher in the tent to mitigate any sort of disruption to anybody's existence, for lack of a better term.
Thank you. I. So Mr. Hussein, you have your hand up? Mr. Hussein, you're muted, thank you.
No, I'm sorry, my hands are not up, I apologize.
No, there's a big, there's a big palm on your.
I don't see it, it's gone.
That's funny, it's on mine, but okay. Um.
Oh, Steve Kaplan, he has his hand up. But that, that doubt comes later.
Yeah.
When you open it up.
Right. All right, at this point, I guess we will open up the questions from the audience. I think we did this once, but we've gone over so many times, I don't know where we are at this point, 25.
Okay, Mr. Kaplan is, is unmuted, he's unmuted.
You have some questions, sir?
I have just a question, I'm asking in my letter for clarification on the word patio, because of the the missing, possible misinterpretation, as Mr. Guiner alluded to, I think it's important that the area that the lighting is asked for be clarified because of the, because of the nature and of the the wording, it could, could cause some confusion, thank you very much.
Okay, any, anyone else? Hearing none, let's go to questions from the commission. Um, let's see, let's start at this end, Mr. Millet.
I have no questions.
Mr. Lester.
Uh, no questions.
Mr. Merrill.
Just have one question, um, is there a time clock or a time switch, and when these lights come on and go off, or how are they turned on and off?
Yeah, they're turned off at approximately, trying to think, I, I think it's around 11 o'clock at night, I think it's, um, it is on a time clock.
Okay, so it's set, what time they come off, go on and come off every day?
Yeah, that's correct, I mean, one of the things that we've, um, you know, we have lighting in the back of the building, on a, at criminal activity back there, and we find that leaving lights on, um, is helpful in mitigating, you know, any type of vandalism to our vehicles, uh, illegal dumping of, of stuff, um, if anything, I think, you know, lighting up the area at night, I mean, there's no residential anywhere near this location, um, you know, i- it's my feeling as a, as a property owner in this part of town, I wish everybody would put lights up to try to mitigate some of the crime and nefarious activity that's been happening in the area.
Can you all see that, that, the patio lights that I put on the screen?
Yes.
Okay, that's, that's what, that's what was sent in.
But, but these lights are on the timer, is that correct?
Yeah, they are, yeah.
All right, Ms. Wood.
I have a couple of questions, um, who are the tenants across the street, what kinds of businesses are they, and are they open at night?
That would be for Mr. Kaplan to answer.
Uh, can you hear me? Hi, thank you for the question, the, uh, the answer to the question is that we are going to, um, be opening a storage facility, which has been approved directly across the street, and with regards to my current, um, building that exists there, I have about 20 tenants, they operate at their own schedules, we're a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week building, everybody has their own spaces that they have access to whenever they want to respond to Mr. Cameron's issue, um, yeah, it's basically when tenants drive by, uh, their complaints that there are glares, uh, not only from these lights, but from two light poles that he has on 14 Toby Road, which probably, you know, will be addressed at some point, I would like to point out in this picture that the patio is adjacent to the building. The tent structure, which has the same lights, is freestanding, and my reading of the application, which is why I wanted the clarification, was for the patio lights. And that's why I asked for clarification, thank you very much.
So, just for clarification, the kinds of businesses that are across the street
Oh, sure.
on your property, within your property, are open 24/7, according to their own schedules, and apart from the storage facility?
Yeah, not, not, we're not talking about the storage facility yet, that obviously hasn't been constructed yet.
Right, so what kind of businesses are the 20 or so tenants?
Sure, I have a fitness gym.
Yep.
It's called Get Fit, uh, Get In, Get Fit.
Yep.
Um, I have, uh, several, uh, mechanics with some of whom have, um, used car, uh, permits, uh, used car sales.
Sales.
Permits.
Mm-hmm.
I have a tinting, a car tinting company, I have several music studios.
Okay.
I have, um, a, a tenant who rents, I keep forgetting, like, slink, slingshot vehicles, um, you might have seen them on the road, you're like.
Yep.
Three-wheel motorcycles.
Yeah.
I guess, but in fancy bodies.
Yep.
I have, um, I have some hobbyists who only work on their own vehicles.
Okay.
And I have, um, tomorrow. I have, um, a candle maker.
Okay, and that's a good representation, thank you very much, how, how many of these businesses are open at night when these lights are on, generally, the majority of them?
At this time of, at this time of year, all of them.
All of them are open late into the night?
Late into the eve, I wouldn't say late into the night, but certainly past, past dusk, especially in the winter.
Okay, and in the winter, so, is this patio open 24/7, uh, until 11 o'clock every night, Mr. Cameron?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question, I apologize?
Is your outdoor patio and tent situation open 24/7 until 11 o'clock every night?
Uh, well, not 24/7 and not till 11 o'clock, we usually shut down about nine o'clock.
Okay.
So our, so our hours are till about nine o'clock, a lot of times we leave the lights on a little bit later, just, you know, and, and I, I would also say that, um, well, I, I'll, I'll, I'll add another comment when, when it's appropriate, you let me know.
Okay, and my only other question is, um, Mr. Cameron, would you be open to changing the level of the lumens? Keeping lights, but changing the level of the lumens so that they are slightly less bright?
Um, these are actually about as, uh, I mean, short of getting like Christmas tree lights, um, you know, these are, these are pretty non-intrusive lights, I think there's 50 lumens, uh, I think they're about 50 lumens apiece, and, and I guess one of the things that I'm sort of scratching my head on a little bit is that the building right next door to us has extremely bright, um, LEDs that surround the building, that are facing, that have no shrouds, and they're facing the street, and I'm just curious why the tenants find string lights so oppressive, and don't find these, uh, these extremely bright. It's, um, it just, it seems a bit suspicious that string lights are causing while, while these other lights don't seem to cause any problems, it's, it's just.
Thank you, thank you very much, I appreciate.
If I could respond?
Nope, I think I've got the answers that I need, thank you very much.
If I could comment?
Uh, this is not a commentary, no, questions only, and this is only, yeah, and this is from the commission only, you'll have a chance, I believe, in the comment section.
Mr. Oliver.
Yes, um, I'd like to know, have, in your facility, have you ever had any call it convert thefts and, um, breaking in entries and vehicles back there, or do you have your parking lot lit up all night long?
We, we have, uh, the back parking lot lit up till about four in the morning, um, we started when, you know, I've been notified of other people having, uh, cars broken into, we try to park all the trucks inside, uh, to prevent that from happening, but we have had illegal dumping, and we, we have had vandalism, uh, I think Dog Star had some vandalism to one of their buses, so, again, the, 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 what we try to do is leave the back lit up, because we really have no neighbors that have, have said anything about the light trespass, in addition, our neighbors have lights, uh, like this go pump has lights on at night, because they have a lot of material, pump material outside that they don't want stolen for scrap metal, and so I, I just think, you know, honestly, it's, I don't know what the.
Question?
Sure.
Do you know the luminums of your lights?
Of, of the lights in the back?
Yes.
I, I don't off the top of my head, they're, they're LED lights that are on the side of the building, um, I could find out the lumens.
All right, thank you, I appreciate your.
Sure.
Okay, Ms. Adams, any questions?
Um, question, so just clarifying for me, I'm sorry, I was a little, uh, late, so I wasn't settling in totally, um, the neighbors across the street, is that the neighbor encompassing the gym, the mechanics, are those the neighbors we're talking about, when I see the memo?
I, I believe, I believe so, I believe that's, um, I, the comment was that the neighbors are bothered by the light glare when they buy our facility. Um, I, I, I don't even know how to respond to that, quite honestly, these are, these that really don't, um, they, they don't give off any glare, I mean, I, I would, I would invite the commission to come out and take a look, we try to do things very tastefully, and, um, and, you know, we don't really think that they're, um, you know, well, they don't look bad, I mean, I think they, they add, they add to the, to the neighborhood, they don't detract, I mean, particularly when you look at some of the other properties in the area, um.
Miss, Mr. Cameron, I'm very familiar with the area, matter of fact, I, I, yeah, and I, your lights, I think it, it, for me, it makes sense, right, that it looks very tasteful, um, I have comment when I, when it's time to comment, so, the yeah, I'm trying to get my thoughts together. The lumens, okay, that's fine, we spoke, I'll save the rest for a comment, thank you.
Mr. Hussein, any questions?
Um, no, sir, no questions for me.
Thank you very much, now, for comments from the audience.
Barry, I have one more, I have one more question.
Sure, certainly, go ahead.
Um, my, I, I, I didn't realize I was questioning, uh, Kurt Cameron, I apologize, I thought I was questioning the other gentleman, I'm sorry.
Oh, I, I picked up on that, yes.
Sorry about that.
All right, no, you could see, it's, anyone, uh, any, anything that's transpired prior to your question is open game.
So, can I question the other gentleman, or just?
If you have some further questions, sure.
Yes, I would like to ask him, has, does he, does he have any stolen cars or stolen parts in his parking lot where the mechanics have their vehicles?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, the answer, the answer is, as is townwide, irrespective of our lights, we are also being victimized by.
So, you have, you guys have lights on all night in your parking lot now, or do you, do you cut all of those lights off?
I have, I have lights on, um, on my building till my, and I, my lights go on at dusk and turn off at first light.
Okay.
Yes, that's it, first light, yep.
So they're on all night, even past 11 o'clock?
They are, correct, I, there's no prohibition on, on my, my, my location for lights, the way I believe there is in the previous site plan, um, that Kurt was, um, the gen- the general conditions of his permit, operating, operating hours, yes.
So, do you know the luminums of the lights on your building?
If I knew you were gonna ask me, I would definitely have that information, I'm not sure it's relevant to this conversation, but I do have it available, because we needed to present an illumination plan, not only for 31 Toby Road, and we also had it presented just a few months ago to your commission as part of our site plan approval, uh, process, as is ordinary with all site plans in the municipality, they require that photometric.
I have one more question. Is it more about it bothering you, or is it that he doesn't have the right permit?
Well, I, I would say this, it is bothersome to the neighbors, not just my own tenants, because I've spoken to the neighbors on the street, but according, if you read my, my letter, I believe there are some jurisdictional procedural.
Thank you, I have no more question.
Errors, including the designation of a patio.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That it?
Mr. Chair, if I, uh, one more question I forgot to ask.
Certainly, Mr. Merrill.
Um. It's just to make the record clear, uh, we have the picture on the screen now of the whole illuminated area, um, at least the, you know, the ones with the, the lights we're talking about, is that the area referring to as the patio in your application?
Is that a quick, the, the answer?
Mr. Cameron, yeah.
Yeah, that would be yes.
All right, so, when you refer the patio in your application, you are designated that whole illuminated p- area that's in the picture that's on the screen now?
I believe so.
All right, so we, are you asking us to decide whether the fenced-in area with the apparent, you know, cement slab floor is just the patio? Are you asking us to consider this whole area that you have illuminated, the patio, or that cement slab area, and then the tent area adjacent to it?
I I'm trying to think how to answer that question properly, to be quite honest with you, um, I mean, we, we obviously want all of these lights up, uh, the tent is so, uh, during the season, you know, we consider the tent, uh, the tented area patio, and in the wintertime, we take it down, so it'll come down next, uh, next month. And in the winter time, we take it down. So it'll come down next, uh, next month. So one of the things that we're working on right now, I believe, is a, uh, is some kind of designation that this, uh, that these things can be put up for a hundred and eighty days and then taken down. So I, I, I apologize. I'm not trying to, uh, skirt your question. I'm just trying to figure out how to answer it the proper way.
And I think, I think I mentioned that, you know, for, that there is a distinction, you know, in my mind, we're looking at both those areas as pa- as patio areas. I mean, they want to clarify that in the, in the, in the, in the motion, uh, be- because you're, I think Steve's right, the patio has a definition under the building code and, and certainly, but, but zoning could be different. You know, we can consider, uh, like I said, in West Hartford, dining patios are part of the public street. They just put up jersey barriers and call it patio, uh, outdoor dining patio. So, uh, you know, I think it's a question of semantics at this point and, and, and certainly, I think what's being requested is to be able to do both. Uh, again, the, the lighting, one of the proposed conditions that I would propose would be that, 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 the the lights obviously are, are only approved as long as a patio, as long as the outdoor seating area is up, uh, which, you know, by, if you look at the picture, there's no way it could be stay up without the tent, so.
Yeah, my, my only concern is that we'd be intentional about what we're talking about here.
Yes.
We know whether it's the whole area or any smaller part thereof. I'm, what you said, Jose, makes sense to me. But just to be clear, as of today, we have the, the cement slab area and the tent is the area, whether you call it patio or not, that's the area looking to be able to illuminate as we've been discussing.
That, that's, that's correct. And as I had mentioned, that, that'll be a seasonal area. So similar to, like Jose had mentioned, what West Hartford does. Um, you know, the, the, that tent will be coming down in October, as will those lights. And the jersey barriers that, that are up will be removed as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The one question, uh, Mr. Cameron. Uh, obviously, uh, you're saying you're taking the tent down, so that's seasonal. I assume at the same time the tent comes down, the hard surface patio is closed also.
Not, not really. Um, I mean, what happens in practice is if somebody wants to go out and smoke, then they're gonna go out and smoke. Um, quite frankly, during COVID, I was amazed that, uh, how many people spent time on the patio in almost like sleeping bags, you know, so that they could go out and enjoy. But I, I, I mean, our intention is that the lights over the patio would stay up, you know, all year round. Uh, and, and then that's sort of the delineation is the fence. And then all of the lights under the tent come down when the tent comes down.
Right. So you're saying those lights, the lights on the building itself would be on, even though the temperature might be ten below?
Yes. Yeah.
You'd be pretty desperate to go out.
I, I, I don't disagree that, but, uh, uh, I'm always amazed.
Right. All right. I think we've cleared the question period. Moving on, comments from the audience.
Have you recognized?
Uh, you have, Mr. Kaplan.
Hi, thank you.
I'm not surprised.
No, that's not. I'd just like to focus on, if you could, on the equivocating that Mr. Cameron just did with regards to a very specific question. The tent is set because of the governor's extension for outdoor seating through April of twenty-third, twenty, twenty-two-three. The tent is seated on four or five parking spaces that have been usurped for the benefit of the, the governor's uh, extension. So it's not a patio. It's asked for designated parking. The application specifically states patio. So I, I think it's clear what a patio is versus parking spaces. So it's, it's disingenuous to say that anything beyond, um, that that fenced area is patio irrespective, with all due respect to Mr. Diner's interpretation. If we were equating what's happening in West Hartford and other areas, this tent would be out in the street in the right of way. It's in a required parking for the building. I'd just like the commission to realize that there's a distinction between a patio and required parking spaces. Also, I'd like to comment on the discussion with regards to parking up lights in the back of the building. We, I'm not saying that anyone's objected to lights in the back of the building. I'd also like to point out that the Pasco, the tenant that the, uh, property owner that, uh, Mr. Cameron mentioned is on Mosey Drive, not on Toby Road. And with regards to the lumens, the lumen of an individual light bulb is independent from the number of light bulbs that are used. So there are many light bulbs, as you can see from this picture, which may put him in, um, you know, to ask for independent lumen count is irrespective. You can see these two people are well lit, probably overlit. But irrespective, I just wanted to point out, lumens is not necessarily the, um, the benchmark. It's the propensity of the fixture. And the last thing I'd like to say is that I am very concerned about the wording of the application, the use of the term patio and the confusion that the application makes with mentioning twelve and fourteen Toby Road in one spot. Twelve dash fourteen comma sixteen Toby Road in one spot. And the location of the site as sixteen Toby Road. I, this is a picture of sixteen Toby Road. There are these same lights at his other, uh, adjacent, adjacent building, fourteen Toby Road. I just want, I would ask that the commission clarify patio, tented area, and specific location of the lights. Thank you.
Did I lose somebody?
I don't think so. Was I heard?
No, I, you sort of got cut off. Consideration. And then everything went dead. I thought you, I thought you'd been cut off.
I'd be happy to repeat it.
No, thank you, uh.
Well, I mean, if, if you haven't heard me, I would appreciate being able to repeat it.
I heard everything you said. You just stopped talking without any indication that you were through.
Oh, my apologies.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else in the audience wishes to make a comment? All right, hearing none, I'll switch back to the commission. Ms. Adams, any comment?
Yes, um, so the lighting, uh, as, uh, Mr. Cameron had stated, it the lighting does offer some psychological deterrent for criminal activity, uh, back, front side. Um, just so the commission can get an idea, floodlights are seven hundred to thirteen hundred lumens. From the memo here, it seems like he's saying fifty lumen string lights. The lights you have on your steps are twelve to one hundred lumens. These lights are also meant to be dimmer to create an ambiance more than anything else. Um, I think it's a good light up idea for the, for the street. I mean, I used to frequent that street before, uh, Hooker Brewery came there. I remember they were in Hartford. So in general, I mean, again, it's to create the ambiance and I do agree uh, with the applicant. It, it is tasteful. I've seen it. That's my comment.
Hey, Mr. Hussein, I have you back on. Any comment?
No comment, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Blint.
No comments, sir.
Okay, Mr. Lester.
Uh, no comment at this time.
Okay. Can we get that picture off the screen, Jose? I, I'm missing all kinds of people here. Thank you very much. Okay, who've I, I skipped over someone? Well, Mr. Oliver, I guess I bet you back in line. Any comments?
I mean, I personally, I don't know what the codes are for the lights if we, anything needs to change, but, I mean, I, I sometimes stop by there. I sometimes even go to the mechanic shop across the street. And it's, it's quite a distance away and there's woods in between. Um, I just can't see how it would be bothering anybody. That's just my personal opinion. I think it, it is bringing people in that area, which brings business to both people. Um, a- and I think this town needs this business and if it's okay to have the lights under required permits and I, I would, I would like to see him keep keeping his business going the way it is. This is my point of view.
Hey, Ms. Blint, did I skip over you? Any comments?
No, you didn't skip over me, sir, and I have no comments.
Okay, Mr. Mayor.
I have no comments.
Mr. Lester.
Uh, you already came to me, but I, I don't have any comments at this time.
Okay, I, I've got my appearances back in line. Mr. Malin, I guess you're the last one.
Uh, with regard to the special permit, I, I could see where it, it might just help, uh, validate um, for the raised patio portion seems that is, you know, represented, their lights would be used year round versus the temporary ones under the tent. Um, which in that case, you know, looking at our regulations seem to be more of the temporary and non-fиксту type. So from, you know, what's being requested here, that, that's kind of my comments.
Thank you, light. I, w- we've had testimony that, or at least a comment was made that the, uh, Mr. Kaplan's facility is something like a thousand feet from the patio. I don't know what the actual distance is, but for my eyeballing it, it seems to me that the distance is sufficient to reduce this lighting to just knowledge that it's there and not to the point it's glaring. Additionally, the comments about tenants being, uh, disturbed by this lighting as well here, sir, would have been a lot happier if some of them had shown up and said, yeah, I get blinded as I drive down the street. And in terms of whether this is a patio or not, it's certainly an extension of the patio physically. Uh, Mr. Guyner went through all sorts of, uh, sorts of definitions as to what a patio actually is. And I guess that we'll have to enter into our own personal decisions on this matter. So having gone through all of that, Mr. Cameron, you have one last shot at things.
No, just that, you know, we, we try to be a good neighbor. We're trying not to, we're not trying to, to bother anybody and certainly that's not the intention of string lights over our patio. It's just to increase ambiance and, um, um, yeah, and, and there's plenty of other lights on the street that I think are far more egregious if people are driving down the street and bothered by them. So I, yeah. Nothing much, nothing much to comment on, other than hopefully we can put this behind us.
Okay, have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Hang on, Mr. Chairman, I believe Mr. Kaplan still has his hands up. I don't know if it's judicial payments or.
Am I allowed? I, I didn't know I had it up, but if I'm allowed.
Grant you the, you're allowed, sir.
Thank you very much. Just to, uh, to correct the record, my tenants are not complaining from their locations at my building a thousand feet away, but it's more like five hundred feet away. But the complaints have to do with people traversing the road, not, you know, as they pass by. And it's not just my tenants. I've spoken to other people on the street. I just wanted to clarify that. And again, I think the patio and, and in deference to Mr. Guyner, I think the patio has a definition of patio and not has parking spaces. Thank you.
Hey, we, do we have a second on the motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Okay, well, uh, any discussion, any, well, we haven't do, all those in favor?
Hi.
Here votes I. We'll be back on the agenda with this item, which is the uh, special permit revised by the application of Cameron for property located at sixteen Toby Road. Contend a motion for approval.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion, comment?
Would you, uh, consider the conditions just for clarification that, that this approval would be only for sixteen? Just to clarify that this approval is only for sixteen Toby Road. Um, again, uh, and for the, and, and for the areas, you know, I think it's already on the record, uh, for the all seating areas. Uh, and again, subject to any building permit or fire department approvals that may be needed.
I accept the friendly amendment.
I'm sorry?
No, I said I accept those amendments.
Something got garbled there. I'm still not sure what you said.
He said he, he says he accepts the amendments.
Who accepts it?
Kevin.
Yeah, I made the motion, uh, Mr. Chair, and, um, Byron seconded, and then I think Jose made a friendly amendment and I accepted it.
Okay, I guess in the confusion, I never heard you make the motion, but certainly you accept those amendments. Thank you.
And I'll, I'll second that again if it's needed.
Right, thank you. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor?
Hi.
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 Opposed. Extensions. Chair votes aye. Motion carries. All right.
Mr. Chairman, I just, I was just giving an email. For some reason, our, we're not going over live on YouTube, but I, and I don't know if that really impacts what we're doing or not, but people could register, could have registered for the meeting on the agenda, but, uh, I've gone in, I've been trying to get in and seeing if I could fix it, just, just for the record, that, that the YouTube link just says that we're waiting on it. And even though I clicked on it, it says live on custom stream streaming service and it's, it's still, when you click on it, uh, on the internet, it just shows waiting for the commission. And I don't know what it's waiting for, but because I, i- it shows up on my, on my screen as, as that we're streaming, so.
I, I don't think that the YouTube uh, streaming is, uh, required legislatively, at least. I think it's a courtesy that we offer. And we certainly have a permanent record of this meeting on tape.
Yeah.
Access that.
Zoom records it and I can post it as immediately tomorrow if, if needed.
Yeah, okay, that, that, that'll do too.
I just, I just need to answer to person, so.
Yeah, well, we'll have to apologize and say we're working on it, trying it to, tell them it's a technical problem. And if they want a technician, he'll be there tomorrow between ten AM. But, uh, it, it, I, I don't think that it's legally necessary for us to be on YouTube. Uh, of course, I'm subject to approval and berating by the town attorney, but I think that's where we stand on that.
Questions through YouTube anyway.
Yeah, it's, it's not a public hearing, uh, venue.
Yeah. Moving ahead. Site plan modification for ninety units of single-family rental residences. Property located at twenty-one and thirty Whitefield Hall Drive, the Lucci Brothers LLC. Um, I don't think we ever heard anything on this yet, have we, Jose?
No, I believe Mr. Zikes would be here. Um, so, uh, let me, uh, let me see if I can promote him.
All right, while you're doing that, I'll just make a typical announcement. This public hearing will be conducted within an application, presentation made by the applicant. Town planners' comments, questions from the audience, questions from the commission, comments from the. Comments from the audience, comments from the commission. And a final wrap up for the applicant.
Think he's here. I don't know if he has anybody with him.
Mr. Zikes, do you have anyone with you?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Members of the commission, my name's Dave Zikes. I am a professional engineer with F A Hesgud Associates. We're located next door over in East Granby. And um with me this evening is Reggie Kronstadt, representing the owner, if you have any, and the applicant. If you have any questions for Reggie this evening. Um, as Jose mentioned earlier, when you guys were talking about the agenda, uh, this is a public hearing. It's a little bit different. It's one of the uh, the only, I think it's the only uh situation within the regulations where it's a site plan review. But it's to be conducted under a public hearing format, and that's in your PLR regulations. Uh, this is for lots fourteen, forty-fourteen, forty-fifteen, also known as uh twenty-one and thirty, Rife Field Hollow Drive. Uh, those lots will be merged following site plan approval into one uh, one single area for ownership. And uh, that's the way the project will be constructed. Uh, we did send earlier today a a copy of the certificate of mailing and the signed affidavit signed executed by myself. Uh, that's in the uh, the planning file for this evening. Um, this is a PLR. The master plan for the ninety units we're going to be talking about um was approved by this commission uh back in April of this year. Uh, this is to review the forty scale, basically the construction drawings. Uh, there were thirty-five sheets included in that plan set that were submitted to uh staff and the commission for review. Uh, there are no changes to the basic layout in the housing unit designs that was presented about back in April uh for the master plan approval. What I'd like to do is call up hopefully my trusty little PowerPoint's going to show up. Yeah, it looks like it has. Hopefully, folks can see that. Looking very quickly, uh, this is the uh overall aerial, just to refresh everybody's memory. Uh, along the bottom here is Brown Street. Uh, this is a Rife Field Hollow Drive uh located right here, which is our main roadway, the access to our site. This is the old Greenfield Hollow Residential Subdivision that butts us. Uh, the newer Anthony's Way that's been fully constructed, the commission approved a couple of years ago. Uh, the old Winfield condominium located here, and then Senate Farms is located over in that uh northwest corner. So the yellow line is the outlines, kind of an interesting shape to the property. And uh, you can see our proposed units and our proposed roadways. This was the master plan that was uh approved back in April. You can see we have uh the open space areas of twenty-four point nine, which are these areas on the south side and the areas on the north side. Um, they uh will abut other open spaces, uh some of it associated with Losalet Park, which is owned by the town, about a hundred and thirty acres. And then the new open space that was dedicated as part of uh Anthony's Way. And then there's some smaller open spaces associated with the Greenfield Hollow subdivision. So all those will be tied together um as open space. We have uh an emergency drive that the fire marshal is requiring that will connect us to Rife Field Hollow Drive North. Um, and where there's also going to be an MDC water main placed uh underneath that driveway. That is purely, as we discussed in the past, an emergency driveway, it will be gated at both ends, will not be paved. And it's purely for the purposes of uh emergency fire access at this time. Um, earlier this week, we received uh wetlands approval for them, for the uh, the actual site plan. Uh, I will have to return back to them once all the final details with the fire marshal and MDC are completed uh for the uh, the connection here, but the rest of the site plan that we're looking at tonight was approved by the Wetlands Commission. And um, so we're we're set there. Basically, if we start going over the plans quickly, um, we still have the three types of housing units. All of our units have garages. Uh, reason why we're calling them three different types is that we have uh along the westerly side of the roadway. We have townhomes that are, um, we call them tuck under garages, and I'll show you the architectural rendering of that later. Where basically uh, the garage is on the ground floor, and then you walk up one level to your principal living area. Um, and then this, that allows you uh on the backsides of those units, when you walk out from your, from your um kitchen area and your dining area, you'll be at grade level behind those units, so it's going to be be nice. And then on the east side of the main road, Rife Field Drive, we cut, we have at-grade um car uh garages. And then uh walkouts in the backs of the units on that side, so that we're working with the topography. And those are all townhouse, townhouse uh style units. We'll see the better detail in a moment. And then we have a uh uh our duplex units that we talked about. Those are two, two units um in sort of a, you know, a typical house-looking structure. Uh duplex units. Layout plans, a little difficult to see at this scale, but again, you can see you'll be coming in, this is Rife Field Hollow Drive. We're going to be constructing a permanent town spec cul-de-sac at the end. Right now, this road just ends and drops off. There's no cul-de-sac there. We'll be building a cul-de-sac to town standards. You'll enter the project at that location there. And we have a uh a pull-off area here where all the mailboxes for the facilities will be located, Rife Field Hollow Drive, Rife Field Drive and uh Village Drive, rather, and the other roads are all private in here. So the postal service will come this far and deliver the mail, and and there'll also be provisions there for FedEx and uh, you know, UPS and things of that nature at this location for the tenants. Uh, we have uh an extensive sidewalk that starts here. It runs all the way through the entire project and connects all the components of the project. Um, we have an extensive landscaping plan uh which will be fully irrigated throughout the site. Further coming into the site here, um, we will have our first amenities area for our tenants. And you can see here that that uh, that area has a blow-up down here in the corner uh where we're going to have a patio with pergolas and a seating area is located here, and we actually have a bocce court uh which has now become very popular, apparently, in these rental-type facilities, community facilities. There's uh, the applicants are currently constructing a facility in Granby that's very similar to this. Very successful. And uh, they have these amenity areas which are very popular with the tenants. Uh, moving on to our sheet. LA two here. There we go. Uh, this is, this is a continuation on into the center of the property. Uh, we have our little mini roundabout located here. And uh, this is where we split off into our other roads going further to the east and then out to the end of right, Rife Hill uh Village Drive, which will end in a cul-de-sac. And then this is where the fire uh lane takes off now over towards Rife Field Hollow North. But as you come down here, you can, you can see we have extensive sidewalks within the project. And then this is our community area here. Uh, we have a um, a community clubhouse located here. It's about forty-seven hundred square feet. Uh, we have a little maintenance garage here for, you know, on-site maintenance. And then we have a nice outdoor pool area located here. And we provided some parking uh over in this area, so uh if any uh, you know, community events are held here, there's some parking here, and then also for folks who don't wish to walk to the community center, they'll be able to drive their car over there. Give you an idea of how this is all laid out. This is a sheet from the Wetlands approval package. And what this shows is uh, you know, the overall layout and the types of vegetation that are here. A lot of this is for uh environmental mitigation. The the sort of blue color here are the pockets of wetlands that we've worked around on the site. And the uh, the light green area is the typical kind of weekly mow lawn areas that will be around all the units. The sort of, uh, I guess you call it mustard color. Um, those will be areas that will be planted with conservation mix and conservation plantings. Those will probably be mowed maybe once a year, probably like in October or November. Just to um keep the invasives from taking over that area. So you can see, uh, this has all been, you know, laid out, and it's mainly been worked through with the uh, with the Wetlands Commission again in the form of providing adequate buffers to the wetland resources. Over here, way on the east side, is a fairly large farm pond that was constructed back about twenty years ago. There's a little dam here. And uh, again, that's isolated in the open space and is provided with, you know, plenty of uh buffer uh between our units and um and and the wetland resources on the site. This one area right here, and it's in sort of this lighter mustard color different color, green color, whatever you want to call it, that's going to be our own internal dog park. So we have a small area where tenants can bring their dogs and let them um exercise on the property. Looking at our landscaping plans, you can see there's uh, you know, quite a bit of material is proposed. It's a very comprehensive lighting or landscaping design. Again, over here on sheet LS two, you can see the model landscaping plantings. Uh, we have some blow-ups included in the uh, in the plan set that shows uh the plantings around the amenities areas, uh the plantings around the unit foundations themselves. You see, it's fairly extensive. And again, you know, all around the different unit types. Here's the duplex units. You can see there'll be nicely landscaped, there'll be patios, small patios located for the tenants in the back. And then they have their garage space in the front with uh at least one parking space out in front of the garage space as well. If you had a chance to take a look at the sheet LS six, this gives you a listing of all the different plantings for the landscaping plan, and you can see it's fairly extensive listing of plants. The street lighting, um, what we're trying to do is mimic the tru- the typical street lighting throughout town. This is uh pretty much the ever-source. I call it the ever-source light. I know it's all through the, you know, in Rife Field Hollow Drive, leading up to this uh, just up to our project. Uh, all the lighting will be private on on the uh property. But uh, the lighting itself will, you know, will mimic the uh, the lighting that's throughout town, so it's just minimal for security purposes. Of course, all of the uh homes themselves, they'll have lights at the front door and the rear door, typical of any house in town. But as far as public lighting goes, um, this will be the light standard, and and the locations are shown on the plans. The architecture, uh, we showed you that back in the master plan. So basically, this gives you an idea of the um, what we call the um the tuck-under. That's the term we're using, is the tuck-under garage. So uh, these are the the townhouse units that would be located on the westerly side. And uh, you have a garage at the at at ground level, and then you would walk up in sort of a traditional townhome that you see uh, you know, in the uh, in the cities in particular. You walk up to your front door, and then your living space is up here uh on the, on the second, ba- basically the second floor and the front and the first floor in the back. Uh, the units on the other side of the uh of the main road. Um, the uh, the garage i- is is at the uh, at the grade level. So those are two uni- two levels uh along the road. These are three levels along the road. And then the duplex houses are all made up of these same materials. So um, you have, you know, stone base running along the bottom. You have clapboard. And then you have this nice vertical siding along the top with lots of gables and uh, you know, coordinated windows. So you got a a very nice appearance uh throughout the development. The clubhouse will be sided with the same material. So it'll be very consistent. And again, if you've had an opportunity to take a look at the applicant's other development up in Granby, um, you'll see the uh, you know, all the touches that they put. These are, these are really nice-looking buildings uh when they're completed. Uh, we have MDC water and sanitary sewer. We're going through the final approval process with them for design. All the other utilities will be brought in underground. Uh, you do have a report from uh uh Jose on the town, from town staffs, he's consolidated the town staff comments. There's actually just a few left over from engineering that are just uh mainly typos and the like. Uh, he's incorporated those as recommended conditions of approval. We have no problem with that. Uh, one thing I did want to mention, I sent in a letter. Um, the applicants went ahead and 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 closed on this property uh from the Belucci Brothers back uh on nine thirteen during during this review process. Um, so the ownership and the development are the same now. And uh, a new entity has been uh created, which is KSFR Bloomfield Limited or or LLC, rather, which um Jose notes in his memo to you folks. And uh, we would ask that the, that the final site plan approval be put in that name so that we don't have to change it later. Uh, so the way, the what, the way it works out now is that the ownership and the development and the applicant are all the same entity, which is that KSF, KSFR Bloomfield LLC makes it easy. And at this point, I'd be happy to answer any questions, uh, the commissioner, or maybe the public might have.
We'll get to that, Mr. Zikes. Mr. Guyner, any comments?
Yeah, just, I just wanted to know for the record that uh, that the motion reflects the change in and the proposed motion, I believe, reflects the change of uh ownership and applicant. And uh, tweaked it, just to make, to make it clear, this is final site plan approval. I don't, I don't believe there was any modification. I don't know why I got put up as a modification, but.
Okay. Makes sense.
And I think you have my memo, and and that includes all the town engineers' comments as conditions.
Okay. Thank you. All right, turning to the public, any questions from the audience?
See, um, we have a couple of hands up. Let me just uh.
Can we get that plan off the screen?
Oh, yes, sir.
We have a Tracy Bloomquist.
Okay, Ms. Bloomquist?
Yes, um, good evening, everybody. Just a quick question. We are fifteen.
Identify yourself for the record, Ms. Bloomquist.
Yes, sir, uh, Tracy Jeff and Tracy Bloomquist. Uh, we live at fifteen Rife Field Hollow.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Um, we're actually, I guess, across from what will be the turnaround. So our question this evening is um, how it came about the access um through the this um through our road, the fifteen homes that are on Rife Field Hollow. Why was that chosen instead of going out um to Terry Plains out through Rife Field Hollow North? We just, we're unclear as to why um Rife Field Hollow Drive South is the only in and out for this ninety rental townhome property. We, um, and I know we have comments at the end, so that's, that's the basic question that we have.
Thank you, Mr. Zikes.
Um, well, uh, uh in answer to the question, I mean, that, that, that topic was exhausted at at the public hearing stage, but I'll give it another answer, and that is that uh, in order to gain access to Rife Field Hollow Drive North, you have to go through town open space to do that. And um that was deemed by the town to not be appropriate. I mean, a decision was made many years ago um to not connect Rife Field Hollow Drive through this property. This property was actually I call it phase five of Greenfield Hollow. There were going to be a, quite a few homes built on this property. It just never happened, and the town actually has changed. We created two Rife Field Hollow Drives. It there, there's a south and a north, because uh it it was envisioned that there would never be a connection through. But um, the decision was made by the town to make an open space and cut off access to uh Rife Field Hollow North.
Except for the emergency drive.
Except for the music drive, which took two years before the town council to get that approved.
That's right, yeah. Any further questions? Any further questions? All right. I'm sorry, Ms. Is it Winter?
Yes. Can you guys hear me? I'm sorry, I'm having some connection issues. Thank you. Darcy, when, thank you, Chairman. Darcy Winter, forty-four Sharon Road, and just a few questions, and I think maybe some of them are already answered. Jose, I think you said this is not a modification of a master plan. It's truly the site plan approval, final site. Okay, I was a little confused with the agenda. So it's, it's site plan approval?
Yes, and I apologize. I just started. I just came back. So this. The, the, the agenda item was created before I came back and it was confusing to me also. Right? So this is a site plan, a final site plan approval for the regulations that is required.
Okay, thank you. Also, the emergency drive access, I'm assuming, or that the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection's approval has been granted or no?
Yes, it has, Mr. Chairman. That was another one-year process.
Okay, thank you. It is my understanding that many years ago, the, what you referred to as a farm pond, which I think was supposed to be kind of a stormwater management as well. Was something that was permitted by Federal Army Corps of Engineers is, are there other permits that might be needed for this project? Related to that?
No, the, the. What was a farm pond that got expanded to, you could call it, I guess, a detention pond. Encompasses this entire region and this site was always envisioned to be developed as a residential use. So it's consistent with all the, the various permits, town, state and Army Corps permits that were issued.
Okay, thank you. There's a culvert, I believe, at the end of Wrightfield Hollow that's to access, as you would. Travel towards, I think, as you pointed out, the mailbox area. I, I always kind of was thinking that that was an old sort of farm road culvert. Was there any consideration given to upgrading it, especially considering? Climate change and more frequent storms and the amount of water that gets him put into the system now with this development? And for wildlife access and things like that? Is there any consideration being given to upgrade, resize? Or do anything to that?
Now, that, that culvert, actually, it, it was an old culvert and it was replaced already. As part of the activities associated with the farm pond.
So how many years ago was that?
Oh, I don't know, 25 years ago or so, but we reviewed it with town staff and it's in very good condition and. We're going to maintain it.
Okay. Lighting, you referred to lighting and, and I'm sorry, my system cut out on me if you already answered this. So did I hear the lighting will be related to what's already existing on Wrightfield Hollow?
Yes, it's, it's a lighting fixture that looks exactly like the, what I call the ever source light, which just got changed in front of my house this past week in Windsor. It looks like a nice little colonial fixture, but it has an LED bulb that shines into a mirror at the top, shines directly down. So it's dark sky compliant.
Okay, and so that would be spaced equivalently like it is on Wrightfield Hollow and.
Yes.
Trying to for light pollution.
Yes, it's designed to be just the minimal residential light for some security as you walk along the sidewalk.
Okay, thank you. Has any consideration been given to pervious pavers for the sidewalks and other overflow? If there are any parking areas, there seems to be. A lot of microtopography in this area, a lot of little wetland nooks and crannies and infiltration seems to be better than runoff. And I'm wondering if any consideration was given to pervious pavers?
It was, but pervious pavers in particular for sidewalks are not very good. From a maintenance perspective, and all of that's been worked into the design of the storm drainage. We have lots of small water quality basins. Throughout the project to accept runoff from these areas. And that's been all reviewed extensively by town staff and by the wetlands commission.
Okay, and I think I just have one more. No, I think you already answered that. I'm all set. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Winter. Anyone else from the audience? Mr. Turner?
Katrina Turner.
Yes. Hi, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Katrina Turner. I live at six Wrightfield Hollow Drive, and I know this issue was addressed previously, but I'm really concerned about the traffic pattern. Putting 90 buildings in that area on this one street. I live towards the end of Wrightfield Hollow Drive, so I've noticed a significant increase in traffic along Brown Street. I'm just wondering, what was the date of the review of the traffic flow for this area? Was it done during the pandemic?
The traffic per report that was presented back in April. Did an extensive look at that. And actually, the data that was used was pre-pandemic data. We have lots of data throughout town. And throughout the Brown Street corridor. And then we did recount it since the school has been reopened fully. We recounted it and, and all that data was blended together, but no, it, it, it is not based on. You know, COVID pandemic timeframe, no.
And my other question is, was it done before the increase in housing units that was planned? I think previously it was 73. I can't remember. The number of housing units that was planned for this area. As you can imagine, that road is going to get a lot of traffic, not just with the residential. Automobiles, but with also other automobiles that's going to service that large housing project community. So I'm just trying to understand what considerations were taken. Considering how much traffic is going to be on this road now. It's, it's fundamentally changing the entire community structure, this housing project.
Well, again, all that was taken into, into consideration in the report that was presented. And it was reviewed by your town staff and your commission and they approved the project. So that the results of the study were that while there will be an increase in traffic, it will not be an unacceptable or unsafe situation.
Thank you. I, I reserve the rest of my comments for the section where we can add comments. Thank you. I appreciate everyone's time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Darcy Winter, again, would like to just have a couple of questions that she forgot to ask.
Certainly.
Thank you, Chairman. I wasn't sure if this is within the purview of planning and zoning, but garbage management. This area has a significant air population and bobcat and there have been recent issues with. Three season rooms and things being broken into. So I'm wondering what the garbage management situation is. Are these large dumpsters that people bring garbage to, or how is that handled?
No, the way this is going to be handled here is just like your home. There will be two garbage receptacles for each unit. They have a large garage space available. And once a week, they will put them out at their curb site for a private. Vendor to come and, you know, and pick them up, but just like is done throughout town. So there's no dumpsters proposed on the site.
Okay, thank you. And my last question, when this master plan was originally proposed and approved. At the time it was presented that the open space, as you pointed out on the plan sheets. I thought was going to be donated to the town, similar to the Anthony's Way open space. And then the last revision of the master plan, I believe it said all the property was going to be held in ownership. By Crown and there was no open space donation. Can you explain what's going on?
Well, the open space is going to be put into a perfect, permanent conservation easement. Using the town standard language for that. If the town wants to come forward and. Take the land, that's fine, but there's been no indication. You know, we discussed this quite a bit with town council when we did the, the easement, that issue came up. Anthony's Way was, was a subdivision and it's kind of easy to take open space. In the public domain when you do a subdivision. It's a little more complicated when it's, you know, a site plan, private land. But that's sort of like legal semantics really, because there's not going to be any difference. It's going to go into a permanent conservation area. Using the town standard format. They have standard documents for that. And. So it's, it's open space, but. It's sort of a benefit to the public because the public doesn't have to carry the insurance on the property and. All those things, that'll be the, the responsibilities of the landowners. So. I hope that answers your question, but if, if there's some movement in town to want to take the 24.9 acres, I, I'm sure we would donate them to them.
Okay, that pretty much answers my question. I, I was wondering what the ability would be to use it for trails with the land trust and, and public access, but it sounds like that's not possible.
Well, no, I wouldn't say that. I, I would think that that's a law, that's a discussion to be had with the owners as things progress.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate the ability to ask two extra questions. Thank you, Chairman.
Any further questions?
We'll see any hands up?
No, I don't. All right, questions from the commission? Let's start the other end tonight. Mr. Hussein, any questions?
I'm all set, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver.
I'm all set. Thank you. I appreciate you.
Okay, Ms. Blint.
I, I have a couple. Do all types of units have the same number of garage spaces? It seems as though they do, just one.
Yeah, they, they're one, but they're long. You could store a car in front of, of your regular, you know, a car that you might use every day. So if you have a second car or. In my case, my Miata convertible could sit, sit there all winter long. So.
You mean, two cars could fit into the one garage space?
Yes, it, it, it goes the entire length of the unit.
Okay, and then also, is there any lawn area in front of these units?
Yes, there is. There's the combination of small lawn areas with, with nice foundation plantings.
Okay, and are there any basements in these units?
Ah, yes.
Great, that's all I have.
Mr. Mara?
I think I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Lester?
Yes, no questions. Thank you.
Mr. Millet?
No questions.
Mrs. Zax, I was just wondering, are these streets going to become town roads? Or will they be under ownership of the?
Yeah, it's all private, all private. Yes, they're constructed to town standards.
Yes, yeah, well, they would have to be, yes.
Yes, but no, private ownership all the way through.
Okay, so that includes snow maintenance and all the rest.
Everything.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have one more question. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Will there be? On-street parking overnight on these streets? Is that permitted on private?
In theory, it is. It, it doesn't necessarily conform to the town's ordinances, but we've provided, we believe ample parking so that that shouldn't be necessary either. I can't say there wouldn't be some street parking if someone's having a, you know. A family get together party or something, but, you know, but for normal parking overnight, no, there shouldn't be any cars parked in the road.
Great, thank you.
Moving on, any comments from the public?
Katrina Turner?
Mr. Turner?
Thank you again, and I know it's too late to say anything, but as you can probably. Understand that this is grievous to those of us in this community. And I understand it seems that the change in the zoning was done to assist the Malucci family, and I can understand it probably was a financial. Decision to do that, but to change this area into a zone that essentially amounts to a housing project. Is egregious and it significantly impacts the values of our home, our community, the traffic, the quietness. The reasons why we moved to this area was because it was quiet, it was secluded, it was beautiful. And it's going to be significantly changed. And unfortunately, those of us who don't have the money and the political clout and the connections. To make a difference in this situation, it's really sad for us. And I just, I, I really feel for the people who are closer to that housing unit. And I know that, you know, it's considered to be beautiful. To me, it looks like Yukon housing that I've seen. It's, it's not in keeping with the quality of the homes in the area. We are people who take good care of our homes. We've been paying taxes. And, you know, we try to keep the neighborhood and the, the community beautiful and we contribute to this community. And I can understand that it probably was a financial decision, but it really is saddening to us because we have no. Clout. We have no say in this and we really have nothing that, you know, we're just helpless in this and. It is, it is very sad for us.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Anyone else? Comments?
Uh, Darcy Winter.
There she is, okay. Ms. Winter?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Jose and Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, Darcy, I was, I was pressed the wrong button.
Okay, do you have me now?
I have you now.
All right, thank you.
You're back with us.
Again, Darcy Winter, forty-four Sharon Road. I, I am a little bit concerned about the open space as when this master plan first was proposed, there was a lot of discussion, I believe. About the protection of wetlands, the protection of the steep slopes of the hillside and other things. I am a little concerned about easements and those being accurately filed in town. Recently, I was looking into land use records for Anthony's Way, and it's my understanding that. Easements and open space associated with that have yet to be filed. With the land use records. So I'm a little concerned about that. I think it would be beneficial to the town to ensure that however these easements are written, it clearly. You know, indicates that this is to be for open space. It would protect wildlife and aesthetics. And recreational values, among other things. The second concern I have is water management. A lot of money has been spent downstream on Philly Park and. I'm just concerned about recent storm events and the. Changes in climate. I, I'm sure this is engineered properly, but I'm, I'm just hoping that maybe a reduction in. And the amount of pervious cover can, can be done, whether it's adding some pervious, impervious cover, I should say, whether it's adding some pervious. Pavers in some place or reducing something. It, it just seems that that would help as well moving forward. That's it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Comments from the audience?
Drew Baker?
Mr. Baker?
Yes, hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Hi, good evening. Drew, Drew and Angie Baker, seven Wrightfield Hollow Drive. I just want to say I echo Ms. Turner's comments to the T. You know, my wife and I are relatively young couple and we've been in the area now for close to 13 years. And the complexity of the area is going to change dramatically. One of my biggest concerns honestly is just the turn onto Brown Street. Even on a good day, that could be considered, considered a suicide left or a suicide right. And just the thought of having 20 to 30 cars in a line trying to make that turn, you know, whether school is in or out. It's just something that I think, I mean, I know there's some traffic enforcement on Brown Street. But it's something that could be potentially be a, a pretty significant situation. So. Just wanted to say that it's a, a pretty sad day for my wife and I. And I just want to say I admire Ms. Turner's, Mrs. Turner's comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Anyone else?
See anyone?
Okay, moving back to the commission. Mr. Millet, any comment?
I don't have any concerns from the last presentation. You know, my understanding, the long term was always to develop. This into some type of project and, you know, having something other than. Only single. Unit dwellings into the housing mix, I think will be helpful. I think that having it as a PLR. Should protect some of the character and having it, the private main, maintenance, I think will be also helped. Also help keep up the character of the neighborhood.
Thank you, Mr. Lester.
No, no comments.
Okay, Ms. Blint.
I echo Mr. Mallett's comments. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
I, uh, too agree with Mr. Mallett.
Hey, very popular, Mr. Mallett. Mr. Oliver.
Uh, no comments. Thank you.
Ms. Adams.
No comments. Thank you.
Mr. Hussein.
Yeah, no, no, um, no comments.
Okay, I also have none. Uh, Mr. Zayaks, one last roundup or? Anything you might have missed?
Um, no, I did not. I I would just say to, um, the neighbors who have expressed concerns that, um. Um, having worked with this, uh, particular applicant on, uh, several projects now. Um, in the meantime, if they take a drive up to their project up in Granby and see the quality of construction and how successful that is. I I think that will go a long way to, um. Calming their fares and, um. And I can assure them that the all the town's staff and, uh. Really, mostly all the agencies with Town Council, this commission and the Wetlands Commission have spent a great deal of time. In reviewing this. And, um. It's, you know, it's it's been, uh, been under review for almost two years now. And, um, and I personally thank the commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zayaks. Would entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Hang on a second. I think I see. One hand up. There's an additional hand. I don't know if you want to. Let the public speak again. Katrina Turner?
All right, why not? Give her another shot.
Okay.
Thank you, and I know this won't change anything, but I did go up and I did see the other units at their building. It is very busy. So I know what I'm I'm talking about when I know that it's going to significantly change the character of this neighborhood. I drove up there and it is busy. It is a lot of people outside moving around, driving. It is very busy. And I understand that a lot of thought has gone into this, but really, it it seems to me that it was done as a favor to that family. Without consideration for anyone else in the neighborhood. And I can understand that they own that property and they were trying to offload it, and they needed to make a financial decision, and I can. Appreciate that, but it is, it is not a very simple kind of situation where not much is going to change. I've seen it, and it's very busy.
Thank you. Yeah, entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Mrs. Chair, just, I'm gonna hands up. I have a follow-up question.
A question?
I'm sorry, a follow-up comment.
All right, Mr. Hussein.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that, again, um. There were numerous meetings on the on this, uh. Site plan and property that we reviewed everything within our purview and included. Storm management to the, um, comments from the fire chief and everything like that. And I just want to reiterate that we did everything that was within our, um, purview. There was no favors or anything like that, so I just want to make that clear for the record that. This is just my own independent decision based on, um. What we are chartered to do. I just want to make that clear for the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hussein. One more attempt. Motion to close the public hearing.
So.
Second.
Thank you. Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Hi.
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 Opposed? Thank you, Ms. Adams. Chair votes aye. All right, we're back on the agenda. We have before us.
Mr. Chairman? I may. I just noticed that we do have eight commissioners present, so. Uh, one of the two, one of the two alternates shouldn't be voting, and and I believe.
I voted last time, I believe. Right, Kate?
Okay.
So Kate's turn?
Okay.
Uh, uh, yeah, I have a key. I usually keep track of that, but I haven't been around again, so I don't know.
Michael, thank you.
Okay, just for the record, that so Mr. Oliver's votes. Are recorded.
I think Mr. Guiner will be using that excuse until we find a replacement. But.
You are right.
I did the same thing.
There's a lot, a lot of things that I just scratching my head over and that, that quite. Five butts is hard, wow.
All right, so we have before us the, uh, site plan modification. For thirty white field hollow drive. Uh, from, well, it's not Malucci Brothers, it's that alphabet soup of initials. Uh, I guess we'll now be the applicant. Uh. Have a motion for approval?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
Request for final site plan approval of a previously approved master plan. For ninety units of single-family rental residence. Properties located at twenty-one and thirty Wrightfield Hollow Drive and in our thirty slash PLR zone. KSFR Bloomfield LLC, owner and applicant. Uh, approval will be made subject to the applicant conforming with the plans that were discussed tonight, which are revised through August five, twenty twenty-two. And as may here, after be required to be modified. Representations and explanations made on the record and the conditions set forth in Mr. Guiner's memo dated September twenty-one, twenty twenty-two.
I I believe the revision was to July fifteenth, correct me if I brought, uh, David.
The last. The last one I have here was was enclosed the, uh, plans as revised through August five.
Okay, just, uh, I'll, the the, or fine, that's great.
Mrs. Zayaks, maybe you could, uh.
That's fine, the one, uh, the one I looked at in the file probably looked at an earlier version when I was drawing the memo. No, that's good. If you have, if you have a later date, that's good.
Yeah, I would stick with the August fifth. There might be one.
For the wetlands, yeah, for the wetlands.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, sorry about that.
Okay. I guess that's it for the motion.
Okay, do you have a second? Thank you. Moving seconded, any discussion? Comments? All right, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We can get, read my agenda. Um. Our next item, and I absolutely, I almost can't read this agenda. Will be the. Let's see, we stuck that in there, so we're moving on to a public hearing. Special permit application. Of Jacqueline Robinson for property at, uh. Thirty-two Wittenberry Avenue. Uh, Mr. Lester, do you have the? Legal notice?
Uh, yes, I do.
Please read it for us.
Sure. A legal notice published in Hartford Current on September ninth and September sixteen. Notices hereby given that the Town Planning and Zoning Commission will conduct a public hearing. At a meeting on September twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two, commencing at seven P M. To consider the following. Special permit application of Jacqueline Robinson to convert a single-family residential home. Into mixed use to include a first-floor business office and a second-floor residential unit. At property located at thirty-two Wittenberry Avenue in a B C D zone. Owner, new thirty-two Wittenberry Avenue, comma, LLC.
Thank you. This public hearing will be conducted, will be conducted as described earlier. Uh, who's here to make the application?
Hi, can you, can, hi, it's Jacqueline Robinson, uh, of Bloomfield, Connecticut, um. Forty-five Wittenberry Avenue, Bloomfield, Connecticut. Jose, can you promote Mr. Mullins as well? He is the architect on the. Or Mr. Guiner, you, from, Mr. Mullins. Mark Mullins.
He's still here? There he is. Okay. The floor is yours, Ms. Robinson.
Okay, so, uh, hi, good evening, uh, everyone. My name is Jacqueline Robinson, and I am a, um. Business owner, um, of a, uh, home care company called Safe House Home Care. In Bloomfield, and I'm also a resident of Bloomfield. Um, I purchased the property, uh, earlier this year and, um. Uh, realized that it was not zoned, uh, for commercial afterwards, and, um, we are applying for it, and I just turn it over to Mr. Mullins to let him speak about the technical side of it.
Mr. Mullins?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Yes, um, the property is a point four acre. It's a nice historical structure. And it's was originally designed as a residence, then it got converted to. Partial business, partial residence. So the purchase of this property recently was now trans. The purpose of it is, or the proposal, rather, is converted to a business on the first floor. And a residential on the second floor. It does have these, um. Nine parking spaces, one handicap space there also. Uh. The, it's a two-story structure. Um, it was built in, I think, the late eighteen hundred. Um, so there is a sign that we're proposing to put out front. That, um, it's going to be a sign. It's not a lit sign. It's going to be, um, just a four-by-five sign that meets the. Um, guidelines of zoning. And so that's a request to put a sign out there. Um, there is going to be a dumpster area that's already in existence out there right now. And so there are ramps that actually go into that first-floor area. So the request is to have the first floor be used as for business purposes for, uh, Mr. Robinson's operation. And the second floor for residential to. On the second level.
I see. Anything further?
Pardon?
Anything further?
Well. That should do it. Yes, so it's just a request to have a business on the first floor and residential on the second level.
Ms. Robinson, anything else?
No, sir.
Okay, Mr. Guiner, any comment?
Yeah, just, uh, uh, just, just to sort of clarify, the property on, uh, back on November, as as is noted in my memo to you. Of twenty twenty, uh, was, uh, converted just basically to pure residential by special permits, so. All they're doing is really converting it back, uh, to a first-floor. Uh, commercial and second-floor residential. It's, it's, uh, just to clarify what, uh, Ms. Robinson said. Uh, it is zoned for that. It just wasn't approved for that, uh, so, uh, it it since we had an approval on the record and a special permit on file. That said that was a single family, I think they they needed to come back to get a special permit. File that to to get it back to a a mixed use, and it's, it is in the Business Center District, so Bloomfield's Center District.
Thank you. Moving on, any questions from the public?
See, hang on a second. We can turn the screen back up, um.
I don't see any hands up.
No, I don't, I don't, I don't see anything.
Okay, let's go back to the commission. Mr. Mallett, any questions?
No questions.
Ms. Blint.
Just one minor question. Will the residential unit be a rental unit?
Yes, it will be.
That it?
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, I have nothing. Thank you.
Mr. Oliver.
I have nothing. Thank you.
Ms. Adams.
Question, is that the building that was the accountant's office?
That's correct.
Across the railroad?
Yes, that's correct.
Oh, okay, that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Lester.
Uh, yeah, no questions.
Ms. Hussein.
Uh, no questions, Mr. Chair.
Okay, moving back, any comments from the audience?
And I don't see anything.
Okay, back to the commission. Mr. Hussein, any comment?
No comments, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lester. Mr. Lester, you're muted, but.
Uh, no comments, Mr. Chair. I'm sorry.
Ms. Adams.
No comment.
Mr. Oliver.
No comments.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, no, no comments. Thank you.
Ms. Blint.
No comments, sir.
Mr. Mallett.
Uh, no comments.
Okay, Chair has no comments at this point. Uh, Ms. Robinson, any final comment or?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay, uh. Have a motion to cause a public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. All right, moving back, we have before us the application of. Uh. Jacqueline Robinson for. Uh, thirty-two Wittenberry Avenue. And the applicant thirty-two Wittenberry Avenue LLC. Motion for approval?
I can make a motion. I'll I'll move to approve the special permit application of Jacqueline Robinson. To convert a single-family resident. Uh, true home into mixed use to include a first-floor business office. And a second-floor residential unit at property located at thirty-two Wittenberry Avenue in a B C D zone. Owner, new thirty-two Wittenberry Avenue LLC. This approval is subject to conformance with the reference plans as may be required. To be modified, the representations made on the record. And the conditions outlined in. Uh, Jose Guiner's memo dated September twenty-first, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you. Have a second?
Second.
Second.
It been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Chair votes aye. Congratulations, Ms. Robinson.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much to the commission. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Wait, uh. Have a special permit application of Richard Rotundo. Uh, warehouse at one ten, one sixty-six Highland Park Drive in I two zone. Soma Investments LLC. Uh, who is here to make that application? Oh, I'm sorry. One minute, please. Mr. Lester, do you have the pub, the, uh? Legal notice?
Yes. Uh, legal notice published in Hartford Current on September ninth and September sixteen. Legal notice, Town of Bloomfield Planning and Zoning Commission. Notices hereby given to the Town of Planning and Zoning Commission. Will conduct a public hearing at a meeting on September twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two, commencing at seven P M. To consider the following. Special permit application of Richard Rotunda to construct a forty thousand, four hundred and forty-three square feet warehouse. Addition with the retaining wall over four feet in height. And outside storage of trucks and trailers at property located at one ten and one sixty-six Highland Park Drive in an I two zone. Owner, Soma Investments, comma, LLC.
Mr. Chairman, uh. If, uh, I, I, you know, uh, I guess technically we're opening the hearing, but we were asked that we immediately, uh. Continue the hearing. I believe the applicant still is, uh, pending before the wellness commission, um, that's. Required a few applicant to consider some changes, and they're working on it as we speak, so. Uh, hopefully, they'll have it all cleared up by the October meeting, so my recommendation is that, uh, there'd be a vote to continue the hearing to the October. Uh, meeting.
All right, at the applicant's request, may I have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second. Moving seconded, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. Okay, so I guess we'll see him next month, I hope. We have left the site plan modification. Out of Bloomfield Cul-de-sac. Twenty-eight, uh, additional parking spaces at fifty-five Jolly Drive. I guess, Jose, we should do that first before we do the eight twenty-four.
I would, I would say so.
Yeah. Okay, yeah. Okay, uh, who's going to make the presentation?
Uh, good evening again, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Dave Ziyaks with F A Huskett Associates. Pardon?
I said, busy night for you?
Spend a busy week, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
I'm here this evening. Um, I'll share screen just to refresh everyone's memory. Clicking, clicking lots of buttons here, so please be patient. Here we go. Um, this is uh the, the apartment complex that's being constructed at the end of Jolly Drive that was approved by the commission um about a year and a half ago. Uh, there's a hundred and eleven units and um it's uh it's the plan occupancy for this now is early spring of next year. Um, like with all the projects you're probably hearing about, there's been lots of different little delays due to material issues and labor issues and things. They're trying to build this through. They started this and right in the middle of COVID. So you can imagine then uh the difficulties there. But uh in the meantime, they have brought on uh professional management to help them that will be uh operating, um, you know, the facility. Um, and they've pointed out that they feel that uh the amount of parking spaces that were approved is going to be shy of what's necessary and that's uh, that's now everyone's on a new learning curve um based on uh, you know, things that have occurred somewhat directly um related to COVID, but also just ongoing lifestyle changes. And uh they feel that there's going to be um a shortage of parking if we don't add some parking. And, you know, in talking to staff, we certainly don't want to get into a situation where people are parking on the cul-de-sac and potentially on Jolly Drive um as a result of that. So in working with staff, uh, we've come up with a plan that we think will satisfy the parking needs and um show you uh where we are. Again, this
Were you down there?
This is the uh, the plan that was approved by the commission. So we have the, the single building, the parking on the west side, parking on the east side, the existing Jolly Drive cul-de-sac. And then we had a dog park approved on the west side of the cul-de-sac and then a uh, a, a community garden area for the tenants on the west side of Jolly Drive as well. And I apologize, I didn't set this up as a PowerPoint, so it's kind of cumbersome going back and forth. But the plan is, before you this evening, is to uh relocate the cul-de-sac further to the south about a hundred feet, uh, which would be, it'll overlap into the area where the uh community garden was going to go. And we would relocate that up here to this corner here. The dog park would essentially stay where it was previous.
We can't see it.
Oh, darn it. Hold on just a second. Is that better?
Yep.
Oh, good. Okay, one, just go backwards just a second. We would relocate the cul-de-sac, which is this red dashed line here. We would relocate that about a hundred feet to the south. And that would occupy the space that the community garden was gonna go in. We relocate the community garden up to this corner here, the southwest corner of the property. The dog park would say essentially where it was approved. And we would add twenty-three parking spaces where the old cul-de-sac would be torn out uh in this location here. And it ends up where, where we've shuffled around some of the carports that were previously approved and gained an extra five parking spaces on the site itself. So we have twenty-eight new parking spaces um proposed. In order to accomplish this, I needed to go to the Z B A and uh get a variance because uh the regulations in this underlying zone say you cannot park within the front yard um, uh, of the right of way. And uh, you know, if you superimpose a forty-foot, a new forty-foot front yard around the new cul-de-sac, um, this parking falls within that, and they granted that variance to allow us to do that. Earlier this week, I was before the Wetlands Commission and the Wetlands Commission modified the Wetlands permit to allow this construction to take place. So we're asking you this evening to modify our site plan to allow us to add this parking. And we will relocate this cul-de-sac, cul-de-sac built back to town standards. And it will be a town cul-de-sac. That's where the public road will end. And um and then the second half of this would be that the reason for the eight-twenty-four is because we're uh changing a town, already a town established right of way. So that requires um, action by the town council. And that's it, Mr. Chairman. Let's uh, I'd be happy to answer questions.
Certainly. Any questions from the public? Any questions from the, from the council? Mr. Mallett?
We have staff report.
I'm sorry, Mr. Gunnar.
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll yield to Jonathan T C who's here uh for this
Right, yes.
portion of it.
I saw his name.
We're there. Yeah, I'm here.
There he is. Okay. Good evening, Mr. Thieson.
Good evening. Um, you know, to be honest, uh, I would rather it'd probably be more productive to actually let Mr. Ziyaks go first and discuss the history and what they're trying to accomplish here, and then I can follow up from that. I think everybody on the commission would be uh less confused. Let's put it that way. He's, he's, he's much more versed on what's going on here.
What you just did, Jonathan, did you just come on?
I just came on. I didn't realize you've gotten that far. No, I'm sorry.
Well, yeah, I saw you were there. Also would have texted you, but, but uh
Yeah. I'm going on vacation tomorrow, so I'm, I was here working and I, I guess I missed it. You switched over.
I explained it very well, very thoroughly.
Okay, so basically, yeah, um, you know, I, I, I think I know what he said. So, but yeah, I mean, the, the, you know, the whole purpose here, I think it makes sense for the town. It makes sense for the application to um, you know, to, to make this adjustment. Um, you know, both for, you know, for the site, because, you know, it doesn't serve the town well if a site like this doesn't have enough parking. And we don't, you know, the only property it affects is actually their property. Um, so, you know, I, I think in, in a, the Public Works Director is on board with this to um shorten, shorten the road, move the cul-de-sac back to accommodate this. I, I don't, there isn't really, there isn't really a downside to it um, in any way for the town that I see it, although I, and I, I will certainly take on questions from that standpoint of moving the cul-de-sac and degrading and everything that they're looking to do there. You know, they've, they've addressed all of the issues that we would be looking at quite well. I really, we didn't really have any comments uh with respect to what they're proposing with this new work.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Thies. All right, any questions from the audience? Yeah. Okay, let's move on to the commission. Um, I've got a whole reshuffling here. Miss, oh, there it goes again. Hang on. All right, uh, Mr. Mallett, any questions?
No questions.
Mr. Mayor, any questions?
Uh, just one question about the relocation of the community garden. Uh, we're, other than just moving where the fenced-in community garden is gonna be from point A to point B. Were there any other changes made in the plan to accommodate the garden in the new location?
Um, Mr. Mayor, the only change was uh we, we uh provided a, a stone dust path up there. Uh, let me, let me call that back up here. Coming past the dog park, there'll be a nice five-foot stone dust path that goes up there for the tenants to gain access to the garden up there.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Adams, any questions?
No questions.
Mr. Lester?
No questions, Mr. Chair.
Hang on a minute. Get my list back here together. Okay, whoop.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
The screen just jumped all over the face. Okay, uh, Mr. Oliver?
Uh, yeah, so excuse me if I missed, didn't hear, hear all the information properly. So the town owned the cul-de-sac or do they own the cul-de-sac?
No, it's a town road.
So are we selling the town road to them or are they, we're just, how does that work? I, I might have missed out and I'm new at this, so I'm trying to understand.
That's, that's why we'll be discussing in eight-twenty-four.
Right.
Okay.
But, no, what would happen? I mean, no, there, there, again, the, the, first of all, I don't, I'm not sure if the town even owns the property under the road right now. I'd have to go back and research that. But regardless, what would happen when a town, you know, the, the, the town would own the property for the purposes of the roadway and when it's no longer needed for the purposes of the roadway and we discontinued the road, typically what would happen is the, the, the land under the road, if the town did own it, would just be revert or be transferred to the adjacent property owners, which in this case is the applicant here. So that, that's, that's just standard practice for um, road discontinuances.
Who would be responsible for the snow cleanup in that area, not the town, correct? Just curious.
Right, the town would be, still be responsible for the cul-de-sac, because that's our town road. But beyond that, that will become private property and that parking area would be on the applicant. They'd have all the, all the responsibility for that, both liability-wise and snow plowing and everything like that, because it's their, it's their private facility now.
Thank you.
Ms. Blint, any questions?
Um, I can't see from the plans, but is there any lighting around the dog park and or uh, community garden, you know, in case people are out there later?
No, um, it'll, it'll be, it'll close at dusk.
Anything else, Ms. Blint?
Um, just now that the community gardens move farther back on the property, I would just think for safety, that might be a nice feature.
Well, you know, yeah, uh, that's certainly something to discuss. Maybe a little safety light out there would be appropriate.
It's more isolated now.
Yeah, that's not a bad point. Yeah, well, if it is anything, it'll be a mi- yeah, a minor safety light, you know, a pole, a pole, a little pole light.
Yeah, or, you know, maybe along that dust, uh, dust trail kind of thing.
Yeah, it's a good point.
Thanks.
Mr. Hussein, any questions?
No questions, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Back to the public, any comments from the public? All right, hearing none, let's go back to the commission. Mr. Hussein, if you don't mute yourself, any questions? Uh, comments?
No comments, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Adams, any que- any comments? I'm determined to say on questions.
None. Thank you.
Ms. Blint, any comment?
No, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Oliver?
No comments. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Lester?
Uh, no comments.
Mr. Mayor?
No comments. Thank you.
Mr. Mallett?
Uh, no comments.
No comments. Okay, Mr. Any, excuse me. Any last-minute comments by the applicant?
No, Mr. Chairman, we're all set.
Thank you, sir. Uh, motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second? Somebody?
Second.
Thank you. Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Chair votes aye. We're back on our agenda. Have before us the question of relocation, reconstruction, uh, town of Bloomfield cul-de-sac at uh sixty-five Jolly Drive. Is a motion for approval? Somebody?
I'll move to approve the site plan modification for relocation and relook and reconstruction of the town of Bloomfield cul-de-sac um for the construction of twenty-eight additional parking spaces, relocation of onsite carports and relocation of the uh onsite garden on property located at sixty-five Jolly Drive in a P O slash P L R zone, owner Jolly Two LLC. In accordance with the plans and specifications referenced in tonight's hearing, um, last revised uh July twenty-five, twenty twenty-two. The comments uh made on the record and uh there's uh restrictions and conditions of approval um, um, required by staff.
Move a second to that?
Second.
It moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed. Extensions. Chair votes aye. Congratulations, Mrs. Thies.
Thank you again.
Okay, new business. Presentation and formal discussion, East Point.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, we did it at the eight dash twenty-four.
We gotta do the eight.
But let's do that so Mr. Ziyaks can go home.
Yes.
Or, or of his own, he can go to sleep or whatever.
Yeah, wrote it in and promptly jumped right over it, yes. Uh, well, that would be on behalf of the town.
Yes.
So, Mr. Gunnar, comments?
No, I think you, you know, again, it's, it's just a statutory requirement under section eight dash twenty-four of the Connecticut General Statutes. That's what's called an eight dash twenty-four referral, in which the co- commission makes recommendations to council on, on uh acceptance or relocation or abandonment of any, 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 any property. So uh, the, the proposed motion should be in the form of a recommendation to the town council to accept the changes to Jolly Drive as proposed.
Okay, need somebody to make that motion?
Um, if I, and I'll just step in real quick, if I may. Sorry, we're interrupting that. But yeah, I think that basically the, the reasons for it were, were covered in the, in the discussion for the, you know, you just previously acted on, which is why, you know, we move, we look to get this done tonight because you're familiar with what's going on. So, yeah.
Right. Thank you, Jonathan. Motion, somebody?
I'll make a motion to recommend to the town council uh that it uh reconsider, that it consider the approval of the relocation of the cul-de-sac at uh Jolly Drive as considered in the application for relocation of that cul-de-sac uh on propping on the sixty-five Jolly Drive as discussed tonight.
Have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed. Extensions. Chair votes aye.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, thank you, Jonathan.
Thanks. Thank you. Good night, folks.
Good night, Dave. Um, moving on, new business. The presentation informal discussion, East Point Energy uh possible utility-grade battery storage facility on Toby Road. Jose, do we have someone here?
Yes, we do, and uh he should be Scott Conick. I don't know if he's brought anybody with him or that he wants me to promote also.
No, it, it's just me.
All right, then you.
Yours, Mr. Gunnar.
All right, thank you, and I'm gonna share my screen. Can you see my presentation?
Not yet.
Uh, I still can't see it. Uh, one second. Now, can.
There we go. There you go.
All right. Well, thank you so much, everybody. I know it's a late night, so I'll try to be quick. Um, but uh tonight I wanted to present on a grid-scale battery storage project. Uh, it's at of, at its very early stages that we're looking to develop uh on Toby Road in an industrial zone. Um, this project is permitted through the Siding Council, which I'll cut, go into more detail on in a few minutes. Uh, but it, you know, the project has a ways to go. These take years to develop uh, and this is meant to be informational to get your feedback. So as I go along, if you have any questions, um, please do not hesitate to, to jump in. Um, so what I'll cover tonight is a quick introduction to our company and our projects. And then this project specifically, Toby Energy Center, um, including uh our site, a preliminary site plan, some thoughts on safety in Siding Council, um, and then some questions. So about our company, East Point Energy uh develops uh So about our company, East Point Energy, uh, develops, uh. Uh, grid scale energy storage projects, so these are large scale batteries that connect to utilities and help them manage electricity on the grid. Um, the pro- name of the project is Toby Energy Center, which is a subsidiary of, of East Point Energy. Um, our projects. For our projects, we partner with a lot of different stakeholders like utilities, um, communities, uh, and a variety of others. Uh, to help make the grid more resilient, reliable, uh, clean and affordable. Um, and recently, our company was acquired by another, uh, energy company named Equinor, which is a Norwegian energy company. Um, and they will be financing the project for us. So a little bit about our experience, um, so we have a pretty large pipeline of batteries, standalone battery storage projects, um, in, in the country. Uh, so G W stands for gigawatts, uh, which I should really change from the abbreviation. Um, and then, so the first project we have is this two megawatt, eight megawatt hour, which means it's a. Four hour duration battery, uh, which is pictured here on the right. Uh, uh, with Rappahannock Electric Cooperative in Virginia. We also have a twenty megawatt project, uh, that was sold to Dominion Energy in Virginia. We're based in Virginia, I forgot to mention. Uh, which is under construction right now and should be completed in the coming, uh, month or two. And then we have a hundred megawatt project, uh, that was sold as well. It has a little ways to go before, uh, construction begins. Uh, but that's another publicly announced project. Uh, and prior to this, you know, East Point is a relatively new company. It's about four years old, four and a half years old. Uh, but prior to this, our founders worked in wind and solar and built, uh, a billion and a half dollars worth of wind and solar projects. So what is grid scale energy storage? Essentially, it's, it's a rechargeable battery that stores electricity from the grid when it's not needed. And puts it back on the grid when it's most needed. So, for example, in the summer on a hot, uh, day, you can charge it up from in the middle of the night. Uh, when electricity is really cheap and then put it back on the grid during peak demand. And what that does is it helps save utilities and customers money. Um, it's a proven technology, so the types of batteries we use are lithium ion batteries. So these are the same types of batteries that you find in cell phones, computers, electric vehicles, just on a, uh, on a larger scale. Um, these projects don't have any emissions, uh, so there's no water emissions or air emissions from the project. Other than typical stormwater that you get for any type of development. Um, they help lower customer, customer bills and in general displace, uh, other polluting energy. Um, and it's a flexible resource, uh, for the grid. So I won't go through all of these, but, um, wanted to touch on some of the benefits of grid scale energy storage. So the first on here is renewables firming, so as you guys know, uh, if you have solar on the grid, the sun is not always shining when you need it. And sometimes it's shining too much when you don't need it. So if you have a battery on the grid, you can store that and save it for more valuable time. Um, already touched on peak demand reduction, um, again, no emissions or pollution. Uh, these are taxable projects, uh, so they provide a lot of income to, uh, local communities. And in this instance, it's a property that's undeveloped, um, so, uh, it has potential to bring is, bring in a significant amount of tax revenue. Um, transmission and distribution deferral, so. From time to time, utilities like Eversource need to build new infrastructure, transmission lines and, and that sort of thing. And they can be very controversial and expensive, um, and cause a lot of headaches for, for local officials like yourselves. And by having batteries placed in the right locations, you can. Um, defer or even prevent, uh, new transmission from being built. Um, they help with electric reliability, so if you have, um, an outage, uh, in one area. And you have a battery and it closer to where you live. Uh, instead of outage taking out a, a wider swath of a community, um, the battery can kick in and continue to. Uh, provide reliable electricity. Um, they're quiet and safe, you know, they're not terribly loud. I can go into that a little bit and have minimal impact on local services. Uh, there's, at, once it's built, there's essentially no traffic. We're not putting kids in the schools. Um, they're safe and, and they're quiet. So this is an example of what, a rendering of what a project, uh, can look like. I have a, a preliminary site plan and a couple of slides, but just a couple of things I wanted to point out. Um, the bulk of the project, uh, it are these white enclosures that resemble, uh, shipping containers. And that's where the batteries would be held, um, they're permanent structures. Um, and then you would have some other electrical equipment, so these green boxes represent transformers and inverters. Um, you know, things that you find, can find within a lot of, uh, uh, different electrical equipment. Um, there's usually a substation, uh, electrical substation to step the voltage up and connect to the utility. Um, and then they all come with a, a fence around them for security, um, and they can have, uh, screening as well. So before I go any further, um, any questions so far? Or, well, yeah.
Keep on going, sir.
Okay. So our project, um, is at the end of Toby Road, um, it's adjacent to the railroad, some manufacturing, um, and a large stormwater feature. Uh, on a neighboring property, uh, so it's pretty isolated. The site is zoned industrial. Um, the project is at its early stages, uh, again, it probably would not reach commercial operation for at least three years. Um, and is co- it would be a hundred and twenty-five megawatt, um, four hour duration battery. Um, that could, that number could be reduced. It won't go up, but it could be reduced based on the studies we do with the grid operator. Um, and it would connect to Eversource transmission lines. So the property itself, um, is a highlighted in red here, it's a forty acre parcel, um, that is undeveloped. Um. And so this is a conceptual, uh, site plan that we've put together, um, so a few things I'll point out on here. Um, the bulk of the project we're planning to have near the railroad, um, so it will be. You'll have the containers that will house the batteries and the other electrical equipment. Um, and then there'll be, uh, uh, two types of substations adjacent to each other that will connect the project, uh, to Eversource. Um. The, there are some wetlands on the property, uh, the delineation we have is a few years old. And our environmental consultant has told us that we need to get a, a, a new one done. Um, but this gives you a, a rough sense of where the wetlands were a few years ago. So a lot on the eastern and southern, um, portion of the property. Um, but. The only area that we would really directly impact is maybe a sliver of this manmade ditch. Um, and a, a small portion of, uh. The area near the road to, to access the property. And those would have to go through deep permits and, and army corps permits, um, to get approved. So when I speak to local officials, um, you know. A lot of questions come up about safety and usually those questions fall into two buckets, fire safety and environmental safety. So to touch on fire safety first, um, you know, these batteries are a proven technology. Uh, lithium ion batteries, you know, I have in my toothbrush, I have in my cellphone. Um, they're things that are household items, um, and, and have many thousands of safe applications. Um, the project will adhere to a long list of fire safety standards, uh, including local, state, federal, um, and industry standards. Which are, are very robust. Um, and you know, the, the, the. The batteries themselves are within metal containers that have fire suppression systems. Uh, the containers are spaced apart so that if there's an issue with one container, it's far enough away that it's not gonna spread to a neighboring area. Um, they also have twenty-four seven monitoring, so. If there were an issue, say the batteries were getting too hot, they can be automatically shut down, um, remotely. So that there's, um. So that, uh, they can be controlled. And then we also do, uh, firefighter training for all of our projects, uh, to make sure that local departments are, one, equipped. To respond to a project like this and to have the necessary training to, to respond. Uh, in the very unlikely event that that would occur. Um, on environmental safety, so as I mentioned before, there's no air or water emissions other than stormwater. Um, the batteries are, are again household, um. Types of batteries. Uh, the batteries themselves don't last forever, um, so, but the project can go on a lot longer than that. So if an individual cell is at a. Uh, has dropped below a certain capacity, uh, you can take that cell out, recycle it, and then put a new cell into the container. Um, there's very minimal traffic and lighting, so once a project's built, folks will come by typically once a week, uh, to check on things and do maintenance. Uh, but the project mostly sits there, uh, on its own. Uh, and it's at the end of a dead end road. Um, and there is some lighting, but that's just security lighting and that can be motion sensor as well, just for safety. Um, and then as I mentioned before, there are wetlands on the property, we're still, um, doing more studies to make sure that we have a clear sense of where those wetlands are. Um, to make sure we have the, a minimum impact. Um, so, uh, one of my last slides, um, Siding Council, so in Connecticut, Siding Council has exclusive jurisdiction over permitting. Um, energy projects above a certain size. Um, that is for better, for worse, uh, it's, it's not my call, but that's the way the rules work. Um, that said, you know, local governments are consulted in this lengthy and expensive process. And local input is really, really critical. Um, and so, you know, the questions I have is, uh. If you have any feedback for our project, um, we wanna talk to other boards and, uh, boards and commissions in town to make sure that this is socialized. Um, but wanted to hear your feedback, uh, in hopes that when we're ready to go to the Siding Council in, say, a year or two. Um, potentially, we could get an endorsement from the town, uh, to get the project built. Um. So that's all I had, uh, one other comment, uh, I have spoken to a gentleman a few months ago and his name is escaping me. About a bike path that might be able to go through the property, and so that's something we've also discussed. Um, but yeah.
That might have been Jonathan T C, our town engineer?
Yeah, that, that sounds familiar.
Because I was gonna mention that, that there are plans that showed. At least that was, at one time, there might have been an easement through a property that, I think the road, Goodwin Road. Used, uh, Goodman Road used to go all the way down, but, uh. I think when the town abandoned that road, uh, that there was some talk of keeping an easement to, for the east coast bike way. That was one of the. One of the areas, uh, Goodman Road is like in that area, up, up on the northwest corner. Uh, you can see it. There's actually access to that old. Um, right of what, but, uh, but there, there was talk of, you know, of, of the east coast bike way going through that property and. Certainly, anybody that's been interested in that property, we brought up the issue and the possibility. It doesn't necessarily have to be along the railroad tracks, because I, I see you guys are really close up against the property. Uh, line, but, uh. You know, maybe you could come up with some kind of a. Uh. Trade off to, to, to be able to have that. Bike path in that area. And I think the idea was to connect it down to, to the University of Hartford, would be the logical. Connection, I think.
Understood, yeah, I, I, I think that's definitely on the table and something we're, we're able to consider. Um, but yeah, i- if you have any feedback, that would be great. If, if there's none at this time, uh, you know, that's fine as well. Um, but wanted to make sure that I got in front of you, uh. And to. To make sure that you are aware of what we are working on.
Any questions from anyone?
Yeah, I, I have, uh, one question.
Sure.
Um, what is the decommissioning plans or requirements when, when these meet end of life? So I understand you talked about the efficiency of the cells and they can be recycled and, and swapped out, but. As a, as a whole, is, is there a proper end of life decommission for the entire project?
Yeah, so we have specific decommissioning plans for each project. This one's at its early stages. Um, generally speaking, uh. The equipment within it, even when it's at its end of life, is very valuable. Um, so there's a strong incentive for us to take the equipment away, um, and to restore the property. Um. Sometimes we've done bonds, uh, with municipalities to make sure that, um. You know, there's an additional.
Is it, is it bonded or, or at least somehow? Financially, uh, secured in some way that it will happen properly.
Uh, yeah.
I did have the question about the greenway, but, um, so it's like that's already being considered, so I would just ask that it be strongly considered.
Anyone else?
Hi, I have several questions. Um, can you please share the presentation with the, uh, commission?
Yes, absolutely.
We can refer to it later. And I think it was maybe the second slide you were on. You were introducing the company to us and the second bullet said something about a two megawatt. Project. With an eight megawatt hour duration. But for the property in Bloomfield. You're proposing a hundred and twenty-five. Megawatt project with only a four hour duration. What does that mean?
Uh, so, so the two megawatt project is a four hour, so the way you get to. Ma- eight megawatt hours is two times four, uh, is eight megawatt hours. Um, so the, the one in Bloomfield would be a hundred and twenty-five megawatt, four hour duration battery as well. Or it would also be a four hour duration battery.
So what, what benefit would that actually bring? To the community? Four hours? If there was a power outage of backup, like a giant generator?
Yeah, so, uh, it could generate for four hours during, uh, an outage. Most outages are not longer than four hours, although they do happen. Um, but then there's other benefits as well that, um, I outlined on one of the other slides.
Um. Well, I mean. Is a, is a four hour. Um, backup. Source. Just localized, or could it be? Um. Um, expanded, you know, farther than just a, a s- a small area. When you say, you know, will benefit the community in an outage. Do you mean the entire community or just a very small part of it?
Yeah, so the, uh, the electrical grid is, is interconnected, so it has been, you know, um. The load of Bloomfield, I don't know exactly how big it is, but it's probably a lot smaller. Right, uh, and the, the electrical load is probably less than what this project is capable of, so it will have benefits for the surrounding areas as well. Um.
Regional.
And I'm sorry. Uh, yeah, I mean, it's, you know, it's, it's smaller than what's needed for the Hartford region, but, uh, it will benefit some neighboring towns as well. Um, and also worth pointing out, um, you know, if the, the line in front of your house has a tree fall on it. You know, this. Is not gonna help the people on that street because there's still a, a break there.
Mm-hmm. And then also in regard to, um. Firefighting, if. Ever necessary. Do these kinds of projects require municipalities to purchase or invest in any mandated equipment?
Yeah, so, um, generally speaking, from what I've heard, uh, most of the equipment is already housed by fire departments. Uh, but if there's anything that's missing, then I think we typically provide that. Um. You know, uh, the, the fire suppression systems, there's a few different ways you can do, go about it. But one of the ways is to just hook up a hose to the enclosure and flood it with water. Um, and they're, they're watertight as well.
Okay. And then I guess, um. How long are these storage facilities, uh, estimated to last? What's their? Life, lifespan?
Yeah, so typically we model like a thirty to forty year lifespan.
Okay. And would there be any local public hearings or just state?
Uh, as part of the Siding Council process, there would be local hearings.
Great, all right, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I have a question.
Certainly.
So kinda like what Katie said, how many? So you're saying for four hours, it could supply more than one town with power if no lines are broken for everybody?
Uh, yes, I, I'm, I'm, I don't know exactly how much load Bloomfield has, but I believe it could. Now, you know, the grid is interconnected, so again, there's um, there's local benefits and regional benefits as well, but yeah.
No, so you said there's the option for a fire suppression system to be attached to it, or if there's a fire, somebody has to come with a water hose and attach it to that system?
Uh, both will be included. There will be a fire suppression system within the containers and there will be the option of, of water as well.
Okay, um, it seemed like they were sitting on like a dunage. Will they all be on dunage or will it be some type of s- concrete slab underneath them?
Typically, there's a, a concrete pier, a concrete pad.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I have a, a couple is uh, are these peaking units? Is that what they're designed to be? To kick in when there's maximum demand?
Yeah, so one of the main uses of these projects is to provide electricity during peak demand, which is the, the most expensive and vulnerable time for the grid.
Yeah, but these, these aren't really units that would kick on and serve the town of Bloomfield per se in the event of a power outage. They're not designed to, to immediately serve Bloomfield.
Right, right. So they're connected to ever sources grid and ever source um is connected to a lot of areas. Uh, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be only dedicated to Bloomfield.
So with these, these units, the batteries would be stored when there's plenty of power relative to demand. And they'd lay without generating it back into the system until there's that additional increase in demand. Is that what we're talking about?
That's right.
So these are more like a well of power than a producer of power on a day-to-day basis?
That's a good way to think about it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else with a question?
One more.
Certainly.
So when the four hour duration is depleted, how is the energy then replenished?
Yeah, so it will charge back up from the electrical grid, so.
How long would that take?
Uh, as little as four hours.
Oh. Great. Thanks.
I have one more question.
Certainly.
So are the Bloom, if the Bloomfield residents were to help fund this, how would that help Bloomfield residents financially? Would it give them a discount during peak hours or?
Um, so, so typically, we don't really ask municipalities to fund these projects, uh you know, we fund them ourselves.
Okay, that's what I thought you were asking for at the beginning. Sorry.
Any further questions?
I do, Mr. Chairman, if, if I may, Mr. Uh, it, it's a large property and you're only taking up from the site plan space on the northwest corner. Um, is the, is the owner of the property uh retaining any rights or are you considering possibly utilizing some of the property, especially uh up in the northeast corner, I believe has frontage on a, on, on a different run mosey, I believe it is, and uh would, would that be available for additional uh, you know, uh industrial development? Or you can add o- other types of, of development?
Yeah, so uh we are only using part of the property. We, we, some of our preliminary results show that there may be more wetlands in the middle of the property than this map shows, so um, the middle of the property may not be very useful. Um, we have talked to the, to the land, current landowner um about an uh, an alternative, you know, use on the eastern end of the property, but that w- we haven't gotten ver- very far on that. They're sort of still working on their own plans.
Yeah. Thank you.
Need further questions?
Yeah, um, Mr. Chairman, one quick question on the, um, the substations, are you, are those gonna be manned or unmanned?
Typically unmanned.
And what would be your, um, I mean, you'll have like a twenty-four seven monitoring system type in there similar to, to just to monitor everything with some fail safes, I assume?
Yeah, so there'll be, there'll be sensors and cameras and that sort of thing there as well.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, it looks like we have an anonymous attendee question. The entertainer?
The entertainer, goodness. Jose, can you bring that up?
Just a Q and A from an, I I mean, the, the person should identify themselves for the record, um, if, if it's gonna go in the record.
Absolutely.
I mean, uh, that, you know, we're required under F O Y to.
I mean, it's.
I mean, it's a simple question. I mean, the question is.
And, and interesting at the same time.
So, so you know, I, I can ask this, do you project require buy-in or participation by ever source? Uh, what would happen if they decide not to participate or would they be required to, to, to take that electricity or uh how's that work with the relationship with ever source, I guess?
Yeah, so uh ever sources role in this is less so to say yes or no, you can build the project, but more so um if you want to build the project, we're gonna study it and tell you how it would be done and how much it will cost. Um, and so sometimes they do their studies and they say, yeah, it's gonna cost a hundred million dollars to build a project. And then we throw up our arms and say, okay, we'll not build a project here. Um, but they in, except in maybe very rare instances, they're not telling us yes or no, um, just how it would be done.
So I have one more question.
You have no other customer.
Right, where it's part of a monopoly, but how does something like this make energy more affordable?
Yeah, so the, part of the principle of the project is you can store electricity in the middle of the night or during off-peak period. So when electricity is cheapest on the grid, and then you can put it back on the grid when electricity is most expensive and basically provide more supply of electricity when it's more expensive and help keep prices down. Um, you know, with your utility bill, I, I don't know how it is exactly in Connecticut, but I know in Virginia, um, a very significant portion of our bill is for the four hottest hours of the ten hottest days of the year. It could be like thirty percent or so. And so if you have something that's very good at heating those peak demands, you make electricity cheaper um and it pa- gets passed along to, to customers.
But don't you need that kind of battery storage at a certain scale to actually have an impact on energy prices across the board?
Certainly, um, and you know, this is not the only project, battery project that will be built in Connecticut. It's not the only project that'll be built in New England or the northeast either, um, so in the aggregate.
Kind of a trend in like e- electrical um use?
Distribution.
Yeah, yeah, so these projects um are, are more of a newer thing, which is why a lot of municipalities haven't heard about them. Um, so uh, yeah, there, there's there's a lot more of these going in the ground uh every year.
Wow. Residents of uh Fairfield County would have loved to have this before some huge transmission towers went in about uh two decades ago. Thanks. Interesting.
I think we have, Mr. Chairman, I think Mr. Kaplan has his hand up. I don't know.
I didn't know he was still here.
Mr. Kaplan. Oh, did you want to speak or no?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
I, I'm an interested party on Toby Road. Um, I didn't really have anything more than a follow-up to the other question, which was um wouldn't it be prudent to find out from ever source if they were gonna make interested in making this a reali- realization for your company before you would start all these uh processes? Just a question.
Yeah, no, and it's an excellent question. So the study process, so there's two parties that we're studying the project with. Um, one is ever source and then the other you may not have heard of, it's called the Independent Service Operator of New England, which is a bit of a mouthful, but basically they are the overarching grid operator for New England. Um, and so we have started that process. It is at its early stages, but we like to talk to communities early on to get their feedback um early uh and to avoid, you know, uh headaches down the road. Um, the study process is notoriously slow, pretty much wherever you go in the country. Um, so a typical study process is like three years or so. Um, so that's why we haven't finished those studies yet and we want to at least introduce the concept before getting three studies and a lot of money. Uh, or three years and three, uh, a lot of money down the drain.
Anyone else? Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Cornell, and uh moving on, we move to staff reports, Jose?
Sure, uh, uh, we've only been here a couple of months and, and one, a couple of, actually a few weeks and, and at least the more than about seven d- days of those were it's sick time. Um, so uh, you know, ju- just to see things on the horizon, there's a we met, well, I didn't meet, but because I was out uh sick, but uh there was a meeting with possible purchasers of the Butler site, which has been a problem, um a- as you may know, back and forth as to trying to get them to comply with the original approval and, and, and the dates get pushed back, so there may be possible purchasers that may want to do something totally different there, which would be fine by me. Let's just leave it at that. Uh, we're getting a lot of inquiries regarding cannabis production. Uh, 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 it seems like every piece of industrial land that's available has got some kind of inquiry about uh the manufacturing of, 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 or, or the producing of, of the cultivation of, of, of the cannabis.
You could put up a window box.
Yeah. Well, that, that'll be legal as of July, I believe. So uh, uh, I, and I think as, well, I think you can't grow at least my son told me, you can't grow it outdoors, which is a, you have to do it inside. Anyway, affordable housing study is underway. Goldman New York was a self-selected consultant, Don Poland is working on that. He, he's gonna provide updates. Uh, I would probably urge some of the commissioners to attend the, the next week's special meeting because there's a Jewish holiday on Monday. They're having a, a council meeting on the twenty-eighth, I believe. I believe it's seven thirty, but I'll try to get to the agenda. There's gonna have updates from uh, from, from uh the, the, the affordable housing consultant and, and others regarding uh the status of that project. Uh, uh, there's a, a open house tentatively set for Monday, October third, and I'll try to get details on that between five and seven for the seven thirteen Bloomfield Avenue, which is the the town center apartments that just got completed across from Town Hall. And as if you've gone down Jerome Avenue, you'll see that construction has started on phase two apartments, uh. And then uh if you've gone down to the, what's known as the church corners, you'll see a site clearing that started at the southeast corner of Blue Hills Avenue, Spitzerbury Road for a twenty unit townhouse development. I think they're calling it Reo- Reo-Beth Court. Um, and uh we've met with the new owners of thirteen Ha- Hundred Paul Boulevard, uh, which is a MetLife building, uh so-called, it's now called the atrium. If you see advertising for that, uh regarding planned improvements and recruitment of tenants, they're aggressively marketing that, I think, uh uh, 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 there's, there's since the D B Z regulations were basically written by signet to to suit their needs, uh, th- they need some tweaking, uh, I, I believe, to, to accommodate uh some of what the, 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 the people who bought the building want to do with, and, and the type of tenants that they want to attract. So uh, you know, as you know, that there was limited uses per um for their own little zoning, which they have a land use area one, land use area two, land use area three. So uh, I'll probably, you know, when I meet with them again, we'll probably come back and, 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 and propose some changes to that. Some tweaks, not, not, no major changes to, to what can be done and at, on that uh portion of the property. And again, uh uh, the former drive-in is, been some interest in, in that, eight seventy-one Blue Hills Avenue for, for residential. I think we approved regulations a few years back uh from one, one potential applicant who then pulled out. But uh, they made, we may have some, so, somebody interested in that, so we'll uh keep you, keep you appraised of that.
There used to be a drive-in, like a theater?
Yeah, that, yeah, we're right, right next to their W D R C.
That was probably like the seventies and eighties.
Behind, behind the Dunkin' Donuts, the property's still basically in undeveloped. I think ever source has been using it as a, as a staging area.
They didn't call it a drive-in when I was in high school. It was kind of a passion pit, as I recall.
On the record.
So, so that's basically it, and, and, and just as a, as an aside, we had uh Jackie Robinson before, uh you'll appreciate that Barry Burson.
Oh, right, I didn't even think of that.
Her name was Jackie Robinson, and I can say that at a chamber after-hours meeting, we also had David Ortiz and Jackie Robinson in the same room. Somebody named, and, and the funny thing is, David, David Ortiz was a Yankee fan. So I, I, you know, the irony wasn't lost upon me that we had two uh two people with uh baseball uh names uh attending that same meeting.
That's a piece of work, yes.
Yeah. Anyway, that's it for my staff report. Hopefully, I, you know, I'll be back on my feet in a moment. I, I've been coming into the office, but you know, like I said, I, I lost a whole weekend change because of the stupid virus.
Wow. You okay now?
At least it wasn't.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm fine. Uh, you know.
Maybe we should.
They had two or three days where it was like, you know, tossing and turning, not sleeping and high fever, and then the fever dropped and I still got a little bit of scratchy throat and flump, but all, all, and all in all, like, you know, I made it through. Like I would, that doesn't recur, so.
And we've reached the end. Motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, may you leave the room?
Yeah, have a good night, everybody.
All right. Good night, everyone.